The board members, and will we just like want your guidance and our thoughts and decisions that are made tonight, Lord? Lord, just be with our nation, be with the ones that are set, be with our military overseas and then on the land. Will we just ask this in your precious name? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, first thing I'm gonna do here is I'm gonna read the meeting procedures. And as you can tell, we've got a full house, and so if everybody will abide by the meeting procedures, maybe we'll get out of here by nine o'clock or so. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings which we do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing lines and items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans, public comments on site plans will be limited to fifteen minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments will be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. And I was told that there are additional agendas back there on the table, I think, or somewhere, if somebody needs them. So the first thing on the guide agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held November 2nd, 2021, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Item number two, the 2022 Mainland Planning Commission meeting schedule is gonna be deferred to the first meeting in January. Item three, public comment, site plan approval application, SP 4873 Brunswick Travel Center. Consider a site plan approval for a new approximately one hundred thirty-six thousand square foot travel center with a hundred and twenty fueling stations and associated infrastructure at 7156 Highway 99, parcel number zero three dash one two one zero eight. Property is owned, planned development TM 2824. Kimley, Vaughn, Horn, and Associates Incorporated, agent for Stuart Payton, Brunswick exit forty-two LLC owner. Steffi?
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. This is SP 4873 Brunswick Travel Center. And this is a request for a new, for site plan approval for a new travel center that is approximately one hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet. The site will consist of a main building that would be seventy-three, approximately seventy-three thousand square feet. And then there's about sixty-two thousand square feet of canopies that are over fuelings, over the fueling station. So they are proposing a hundred and twenty fuel pumps and then over, more than five hundred parking spaces. And this is an economic development project, and they are expecting approximately two hundred full-time equivalent positions. And this proposal is up at exit forty-two, so right off of the I-95 interchange. And this is the proposal. So these are their, their access points to the site. This is a proposed building. And then here are the fueling stations, parking spaces. And this is a conceptual rendering of the proposal. And these are your possible actions, and staff is recommending approval of the application as presented. And I'd happy to answer any questions. And Blair Nighting from Kimley Horn, is he representing the applicants? Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, Steffi, I think I know the answer, but this is not gonna be your stereotypical truck stop, right? This is just a travel center for basic cars and RVs?
That, that's my understanding is what's been proposed, correct?
Any other questions for staff? All right, will the applicant please come forward?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. What are you here for?
I'm Brian Deitch with Kimley Horn.
Okay. And you're the, you're the applicant for this, right?
Correct, yes, the applicant for the Brunswick Travel Center.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? All right, you might stand by.
Yes, I'll be here.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to this, please do so. Come up to the podium and state your name. Remember, you have three minutes.
First, I'd like to say, from the day that we found out, from seeing the placards on ninety-nine, it was thirteen days for us to get information about this. It was put out the day before Thanksgiving, then you had the Thanksgiving weekend, then my wife went there on Monday, Tuesday, to get information about it, so we could find out what's going on. Couldn't get any information. The reason? The project was too big, and they hadn't compiled it yet. So a couple of days ago, that information was put out that you're seeing here. And that's just a point that I'd like to make, but I've been told that the time limit that they was, the package was put out was in legal compliance, so it might not mean anything.
Sir, would you please state your name, please?
I'm Sam Willis, and my home is at one twenty-nine Choctaw Road. My second point is that my property is directly across from this proposed site right here. And also Morning Star Family Services Youth Center, which handles troubled issues. And I found out that sometimes they, they get off the grounds, run away, or whatever you wanna call it. And with this site right there, this is a good opportunity for them to get into another vehicle and leave that site. I'm just making that point about it now. Our subdivision has approximately fifty homes in it right there. I hadn't found anyone that's proponent for this site yet. It is a lovely subdivision, quiet, big trees everywhere, large lots. And they live there because that's what they want to live in. They don't want to live across from a place where there's a hundred and twenty fueling stations. I know that the road's gonna be widened, and the traffic pollution that's gonna be there, the noise pollution, the light pollution is going to be enormous. And it's just, I, what I don't understand is this. That site is on the east side of I-95. And there have been proposals for this to be built, all kind of ways, from your animal center to, I've been told, a shrimp factory, to whatever in it right there. Well, on the west side of ninety-five, there's not homes right there. There's not a canal that's historic. Thank you for listening to this.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition?
Good evening, my name is Tammy Weason, and I live at four forty-six Choctaw Square. Um, I live in a neighborhood that is filled with mostly elderly individuals. We cannot get proper lighting in our neighborhood. We have people that come off I-95 now that pull in to the empty lots and sleep. I've personally had to call the police about somebody just sleeping across the street in which me and my husband could not awaken. Um, a travel center is a great idea, if it was a gas station. We have a rest area, what, a mile down the road, if that. Five hundred parking, um, travel rest area is going to increase travel flow, which we're already going to have an increase because of the approval of the neighborhood. We've had, you know, people's homes broken into. We've had golf carts stolen out of front yards, and we watch each other, and, you know, that's just not enough. There was also mentioned the youth boys' estate, well, it's now his youth estates, Morning Star. Those children escape often, and they come into our neighborhood. And to have that threat of them being seen and picked up by somebody, or as the other gentleman said, getting into a car or hiding into a car, that puts our youth at risk. What is this company going to do for our neighborhood? What protections are they going to give us, to give our landscaping, to give the wildlife that inhabit that area? And those are some of my concerns. Thank you.
All right, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition?
Yes, I'm Beth Vanderbeck. I'm the CEO of Morning Star Children's Home. And our property is located directly across the street from the proposed project. I've come here tonight because I wanted to make sure that each of you are familiar with the children's home. In fact, I invite you to come and see the children's home before you make a decision, if your decision is not negative. The children's home has been there since the mid-forties. It serves Georgia's foster children. We take children from all over the state. They are teenagers, twelve to twenty. They have two things in common. They have low IQs, they're developmentally delayed youth. We're the only place in the state that solely serves the low-IQ children in our state. But secondly, they're with us for counseling, and they're with us for counseling because they have been abused, neglected, or been through some other major life trauma. You've heard several people mention that the children from Morning Star occasionally run into the neighborhood. They do, because children that have been through trauma have trouble expressing their emotions, and their behaviors can include trying to run away, even from those of us who are trying to help them. Our campus is a sanctuary for these children. It's supposed to be a safe place. So when I heard about this project, I had two concerns about the safety for our children. The first concern is that our children do sometimes get off our campus, and our staff work hard and have always helped them return safely to us. A truck stop or a gas station across the street is going to entice my children. Our boys love trucks, just like all boys do. And I'm worried that any child who gets over there will easily get lost and picked up. And secondly, I'm concerned, just like the neighborhood, that we have people wander onto our campus that do not belong there. And having this kind of development across the street is going to encourage those who are curious to come into our campus. Now, we have a gate. It is not one that would keep people out the way it should. I have a gate guard location, but I do not have twenty-four-hour guard there. But if this project happens, I will need to incur the expense, or would hope the county or this development project would come over to the children's home and help make sure that they can do everything they can to keep the children, Georgia's foster children, safe. I would hope that they and the county would take that responsibility. I do encourage you to come. I'm sure it's been a long time since any of you have been to Morning Star. Come and see it. Come and see our kids, so that you can make the best decision, not just for a financial decision for the county, but for Georgia's foster children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening.
All right, folks.
My name is James Pope. I live at one forty-seven Seminole Road. It's the subdivision across from the proposed site. I'm not gonna try to say what's already been said. What I will say is that this thing is gonna have a hundred idling diesel engines going twenty-four seven. The pollution from that, from the runoff and the potential fuel spills, will spoil the water table, and the people in our neighborhood are on groundwater wells. So I respectfully ask that you deny this site plan. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Ellen Stamey. I live at one eleven Seminole Road. In addition to what everybody else has said, I fully agree with everything they're saying. The noise pollution, the potential spills, I can't even picture a hundred and twenty fueling stations across the street from my home. The noise pollution is already bad enough. When we do have occasional eighteen-wheelers that come down that little strip right there to get to seventeen, you can hear them downshifting in the middle of the night. And having the opportunity for this many vehicles to be there is gonna be shocking. You're gonna ruin the neighborhood. The decline of all of our property values is gonna come overnight as soon as this thing is up. And I guess I would sum up everything I have to say is to ask each one of you sincerely, would you like to live across the street from this? And I can imagine what your answer would be. And we all feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Strickland? Everybody else? This isn't our first time talking about this piece of property. We've lived there for a long time, and we understand that it's an interstate piece of property, and it's probably gonna be developed at some point. What I don't really understand is it came pretty quick, and I'd wish we could sit down with the folks from Buc-Ee's and let them show us what we're gonna do. You know what I'm saying? So we see what's going on. I see a drawing, and I know that property very well. But it's hard to understand the layout that they put on there. How's it gonna affect the canal? That's a historical canal. Have they, have they checked to see if there's any artifacts there? Have they checked to see, you know, if it's gonna impact wetlands? I'm sure they've done that, but have they really looked at the impact that it's gonna have on the canal and everything around it? And that whole area is historical, all the way from the river, all the way to Hoffel, all the way up the side. There's a black cemetery right up on the, not far from it. And it's, it's where we live, and it's where we have lived. And we're not going anywhere, but it would be nice if we could, if we could see what we're gonna have to live among if this is what's coming, and see how maybe they could find a way to, uh, to work with us if we have any problems and work through it. We did that with the zoo. We've done it, and we've been able to work through it. And we just, we wanna keep the development up to the, uh, to the west, so it doesn't get down in front of our house, where they help us with some noise stuff. And I speak to him, 'cause that's who we really need to be talking to. Y'all can approve it, but they can't, they can't, they don't have to do it if, if they don't agree to it. And when we dealt with Branniger, we were able to work through all these issues, thanks to Mr. Strickland a lot. He helped us a lot with that. And it's just, it's just constant, and we know it's coming. But we'd like y'all to, uh, you know, put a little more thought into it, and maybe give us some, some time to sit down with the folks from, uh, the gas station and see what we can work out, so that it's equitable for everybody, and we don't lose fifty years of history right there. I sure appreciate it. Y'all consider it, please.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Lawrence Tran, two oh six Apache Road. I just wanna reiterate what everybody else has already said. This is not the right location for something this massive. I mean, just the clearing of the trees and the traffic coming off exit forty-two is just gonna devastate our neighborhood and the Morning Star School. The light pollution and noise pollution alone are bad as it is with the interstate, but with the clearing of the trees and putting something in this massive, it's just not the right place for it. And like my neighbors have already stated, you know, we get unwelcome traffic as it is, and this is just gonna be a big old green light for people to come down from that exit and go where they don't belong. I'm opposed to the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? This will be the last speaker for opposition, so.
Well, my name's Pete Peterson. I live at one four five Choctaw Road. I would appeal to all of you. It's like some, one of the other gentlemen said, would you want this in your backyard? I can't even visualize what a hundred and twenty fueling stations is. I mean, I'm pretty worldly. I've been around through all, almost all the United States. I don't know that I've seen a hundred and twenty fueling stations. That's a pretty big project that's gonna go across the street from me. I'm the second house off of, off of ninety-nine. This is gonna devastate our property. I would encourage you, and I'd ask you, plead, I'd plead with you to turn this down. Thank you.
All right. And you got, you got one minute.
I have one question. Are you gonna be selling diesel?
Ma'am, address your questions to us, okay?
Sir, is the company gonna be selling diesel?
We'll, when the applicant is, gets a chance to be back up here, we'll make sure that question's answered.
Thank you.
All right, anyone wishing to speak in support of this application? Hearing none, seeing none. The site plan approval for application, SP forty-eight seventy-three is closed. Would the applicant like to make any kind of rebuttal to any of the things that were said?
Certainly, I think everyone's time. There was definitely a lot of concerns. I wanna touch on quite a few of the bigger ones. So this national brand, I don't think it's what you're thinking when you say the word travel center. This is a very family-oriented brand, and when they say that there's no truck patrons, that, that is true. They will run them off, and that is not allowed. So there will be nobody there that is buying gas as a trucker. The only trucks that will come in is those that are delivering, you know, goods to the, the bits. So the other bits of this is this national brand has a very high sensitivity to the environment and to the legislation. I've done quite a few for them, and they go over and beyond, and I have to design over all the codes for anything from the environmental standpoint. To hit on the last speaker, yes, diesel fuel sales will be available. A bit of the, um, in terms of code, with lighting and sound, everything will meet, you know, local state codes. There's no intent to circumvent There's no intent to circumvent any codes. So what you've been, you know, laid out as the law is what will be done. And we will be going through a vigorous permitting with G., GDOT for State Route 99 improvements to make sure traffic is, you know, per code and handled for the extra traffic and trips. Was there another comment that hit hard that you would like me to talk on?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Sir, would you predict the traffic for that?
For this one, we have not gone through a full traffic study yet, but for a similar-sized traffic for this product nationally, it's about 20,000 trips.
All right, all right, folks.
Not 20,000 cars, trips.
You had your chance to come up, okay?
Can't hear you. We could hear what's said. If you turn around and we're talking that way. Would you say what?
We average around 20,000 in average daily trips. So that's 10 in out.
Sir, I was told that I can't say the name of the brand that we're talking about, but I have frequently frequented the same business in North Florida several times, many, many, many times, as a matter of fact. But we talk about something that's equivalent to the one that's just on the other side of Jacksonville or in Daytona Beach.
Yes, sir. Yep. The same brand, the same product.
Okay. And on both of those, they're fairly well-hidden. The buffers, when you get right off the interstate, you can't see it from the interstate, nor can you see it until you get in the entrance. You can't hear it. Is that correct, sir?
So in terms of the St. Augustine store, I would say that that one is set a little bit back, but the other Florida store, the Daytona store, is as open as you could possibly imagine from visibility.
Yes, sir.
And as a brand, you know, the, the brand usually has visibility from the, from the interchange. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Sir, question. Question for you. I'm also familiar with, with your brand. Can you give us an idea how many of these travel centers that you have nationally?
Of the larger travel centers?
Twenty. Twenty. There's people making $32 an hour at these, and it's close to, I understand 150 to 200 jobs that's going to come from this facility. Is that cor, I mean, there's people making up to $32 an hour, but starting pay there's $22, $25.
I mean, yes, sir. If you go to these stores right in the front, there'll be a big placard saying these ranges, and it does draw attention because it is a very good wage and it's going to very positively affect the, you know, the economics of this.
I've never heard anything like that before for a convenience store. My family's been in a convenience store for, for a long time, and that's unheard of.
Right. This is not a travel center that, you know, you're thinking of. So I want to put that out there again, that this is a family establishment that I think you're going to be proud that's in your town. It's, it's different.
All right, folks. Let's stay civil. All right. Anything else for the applicant? Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. How many entrances from 99 and how close in mile, feet, whatever, to the intersection, the first turn-in to the subdivision that we're talking about?
Um, I don't have the measurement off the top of my head, but the limited access right-of-way starts, or you could say ends, right before that first turn. So as you might know, GDOT will have a limited access where you cannot have turns. This comes slightly after that. And off of State Route 99, it's the two you see there.
Okay. Just those two. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant commissioners? Sir, the public comments closed. All right, folks. Commissioners, need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve site plan SP 4873 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve SP 4873 as presented. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed. It's passed. SP 4852, 310 Frontage Road, site plan amendment. Consider approval of a site plan amendment for the construction of a closed hotel at 310 Frontage Road, parcel 03-16375. The original site plan for this parcel, SP 4735, was approved by the Mainland Planning Commission on August 3, 2021. The parcel is owned by Plan Development General, GC 17-97. Chris Amos, CSSEC agent for Mr. Patel. Sharice Sante, Algo owner. Staff?
Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning. This request for approval of a site plan amendment for the construction of a new hotel.
Maurice, I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Maurice, if you hold on just a minute.
Sure.
I can't hear you. All right, folks. There's a, there's a lot of people in here this evening, so if you will keep your comments down, please. Other people can't hear because of people talking in the audience.
Again, this Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. This is a request for approval of a site plan amendment for the construction of a new hotel at 310 Frontage Road. The original site plan for this site, SP 4735, was approved by your board on August 3, 2021. That site plan authorized the construction of a hotel with a footprint of 10,913 square feet. The applicant is currently requesting approval of a hotel with a building footprint of 14,486 square feet. And should the present site plan amendment before you tonight not be approved, the original site plan that was approved in August will remain in effect. The applicant had previously submitted a rezoning application, ZM 4805's request an increase in maximum height on the site from 35 to 50 feet in order to construct a four-story hotel, but the applicant withdrew that application and never made it to a public hearing. Members of the HOA and the neighboring Royal Oaks Residential Subdivision have expressed concerns to both the county and the applicant that unmitigated drainage from the proposed hotel may cause health and safety issues and property damage to homeowners. They've also expressed concerns about potential negative impacts to the traffic pattern in the area. And here's the zoning map showing the site. You have Tortuga Jack's right here, McDonald's right here, and this is the Royal Oaks subdivision. And this is the site plan showing the new 14,000-square-foot hotel. And again, this is Tortuga Jack's right here, and this is Royal Oaks down here. And these are the proposed elevations of the three-story hotel. And in addition to site plan approval, the applicant's also asking for a height limit exception. Section 617 of the zoning ordinance allows the mainly, allows the planning commission to grant a height limit exist, exception for elevators and other structures on top, on top of the roof of a building. And right now, the maximum height limit in the plane development of this site is in is 35 feet. The roof is at 33 feet, 11 and 5/8 inches, and the applicant is asking for a height limit exception up to 40 feet to allow for these parapets and elevators. And as I mentioned before, drainage has been brought up as an issue by the adjoining landowners, and just wanted to share what the drainage patterns are for the area. There's a ditch right here behind the Tortuga Jack's and McDonald's flowing down towards the hotel site. There's another ditch right here going from Frontage Road down to the bottom of the hotel site, and then the drainage goes this way through Royal Oaks and ultimately out to the marsh. And these are your possible actions. If you are going to approve this site plan, we're suggesting a few, a couple of conditions. The first condition is that you reimpose the conditions from the first site plan approval. Also, the second condition that we're requesting is that the applicant will provide Glen County with an updated drainage study for the site. The study will be submitted at time of application for either construction plans or a commercial building permit. And if you choose to approve their height limit exception, the suggested condition is a height limit exception of an additional five feet above maximum permitted height will be granted to allow for parapets and elevators. And Chris Amos, the agent for the project, is here tonight.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for Maurice. On the height exception.
Sure.
Is that pretty common to, you know, extend that a little bit, you know, in the case of elevators and parapet walls?
Yes. I actually looked at plans for some hotels. I found a couple of, for hotels that don't have pointed roofs, it is pretty typical to have this kind of parapet and it's height above the roof for elevators and parapets. Hilton Garden Inn, yeah, let me, let me get the figures for that. Yeah, the Hilton Garden Inn at exit 38 has a roof at 43 feet, and there's parapets that go up to 49 feet, and there's elevators that go up to 55 feet. And the La Quinta Inn also at exit 38 has a roof at 46 feet, but it has parapets that go all the way up to 64 feet. So for hotels that don't have pointed roofs, it is pretty typical to go a little bit more above the roof level.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners? That drainage ditch, how big of a, is the efforts to move that, or will they be able to cover it? How would that, how's that going to be?
You talking about the one in the middle of the site that they're going to have to abandon?
Yeah, the one in the middle of the site, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know they're going to build a new stormwater collection system on the site.
That'll go to that.
Yeah, that'll feed down to the southwestern corner of the site, but I'm sure Mr. Amos can speak more on that.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners? All right, yeah, please go forward.
Good evening. Chris Amos with CSSEC Incorporated representing the owner. So to answer, I'm going to start with what you've just asked because it's fresh on my mind. The drainage is going to be collected and routed around the building. A new easement will be put around the building on the pipe, and then it'll be discharged about the same location that it was discharged before. So it's not a whole lot of water. I've been out there and inspected the entire drainage system in the right-of-way of 17, and we don't believe it's going to be a problem to reroute that around the building. The purpose of the parapets is to screen air conditioning equipment primarily. That's not only from, not only from visible evidence that they're there, but from noise and everything else as well. I would like to point out that we met with the owners, or the owners met with the neighborhood at his office a few weeks ago to discuss their concerns about, about this site plan. And we've done some, done everything that we can do to address those concerns. There will be no lighting mounted on the building. There will be nothing that's projected into the neighborhood. All of the lights in the rear parking lot have been lowered so that we've got, as low as we can get them to maintain light levels, they'll be directed at the ground and at the building. We've slightly relocated the pool from the original location. We're going to put an additional landscaping around the pool to try to screen the noise from that, although we don't think that's going to be a big problem. This is not a resort hotel. This is a business hotel. And we've also are going to replace the privacy fence that runs along the edge of the buffer with a new privacy fence that's eight feet tall. We had more parking in the rear of the building on the original plan. You noticed that the site plan has kind of a cul-de-sac-looking thing in it, which is something that we had to do to address Hilton's concerns about turnarounds back there, but that also reduced the parking in the rear of the building. And I suspect that most of that parking in the rear is going to be employee parking. There's not going to be a lot of in and out from that rear parking lot. There are no, there's only two doors in the rear of the building. The main entrance obviously is in the front, so all the activity is mostly going to be directed at the front of the building. In terms of the overall drainage, and Maurice pointed out this, this big drainage ditch that's running right along the rear, that actually was constructed as part of the Brampton Commercial Park when it was subdivided, and that was, that was constructed as a detention facility. So the downstream end of that ditch, before it makes the turn to go into Royal Oaks, there is a weir wall that is in that ditch that backs water up in the ditch, and there's a hydrology study that was done by the original developer who we just were able to find recently that limits the amount of stormwater runoff that we can, that we can have from the site. So whenever we submit the engineering plans, then I can more fully address the storm drainage. I haven't done a full design on this project yet until we get site plan approval. I won't start that effort.
Any questions for the applicant commissioners?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
From the retention pond, where does that water, from the retention pond, where it has to go to the marsh somewhere? Where does it go?
It turns and runs down, let me see if I can get my pointer out again. It turns and runs around the corner and then runs back. Can't really see exactly where that's running. It runs back towards Royal Oaks, and then it goes through a 36-inch culvert that goes under Royal Oaks Drive, and then into a very large drainage, I don't know if it's natural or if it was excavated, but a very large drainage canal that then flows out to the marsh. And I didn't see any evidence, I've been out there and inspected this, I didn't see any evidence that there was any kind of a problem with erosion at the end of that pipe. In fact, in the original hydrology study that was drainage study that was done for Brampton, there was a recommendation that that pipe be increased from 30 to 36, and I believe that was done subsequent to that hydrology study being done.
Any other questions for the applicant commissioners? All right, sir. This is a public hearing for site plan approval for amendment. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, come up. Remember, you have 15 minutes for each side, three minutes per speaker.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jack Ray. I live at 112 Dunkirk Lane, Royal Oaks. I'm going to speak kind of quick. I sent y'all some, some things yesterday, some possible questions. I'm going to run through these fairly fast. I have two areas that really concern us, traffic and drainage. Traffic in that area in 2000... and extends beyond available means for the traffic, you know, dealing with traffic. They said the only way to mitigate that somewhat was to put a traffic light in that, in that area synchronized with the exit 29 traffic light to help mitigate some of the traffic. That was never done. Now there's going to be a quick stop, which has up to 55 pumps and convenience store and probably a fast food joint, and that immediately next to the pilot, 55 pumps. That's going to increase the traffic going into there, cross-turning on Highway 17, US-17. That's going to increase that traffic, I don't know, exponentially, but it's going to be a lot worse, a lot more dangerous. Couple that now with the True Hotel with the traffic that they're going to have for that, and understand a couple hundred yards down from Royal Oaks, there's, on the other side of the US-17, there's going to be a marina, a restaurant, and a RV park and 55 acres there, all within a couple hundred yards of Royal Oaks. Traffic is going to, is just so bad. What we're asking for is that y'all, y'all take a look at this traffic impact assessment, and that was done before the quick stop, before the True Hotel and before the, the RV park and everything down the road. It's going to, it's going to, that's a high-speed area on US-17 that's going to cause problems. The other traffic issue is the McDonald's entrance there, McDonald's, Zaxby's, and Tortuga Jack's. Mr. Patel said they're going to use that entrance as their entrance exit for the hotel as the only one. Anybody that's been in that area now, and I know some of the commissioners have been up there and they've already expressed concerns as it, as it stands now, traffic gets backed out to US-17, waiting for people to get in there. Mr. Patel says that, that will not be a problem to use that. The, the other, the other issue is the access road he wants to use, or he plans to use, tractor trailers, construction vehicles, and large RVs parked on that road all the time. time. It's not a very big road, it's somewhat of a narrow access road, because the parking areas in, in these establishments cannot accommodate those sized vehicles, so they park there in each. Now, we're, they're still gonna park somewhere after this hotel is built. You're gonna have accidents on this road. You, I guarantee you're gonna have accidents on this road because it's not, it can't accommodate. But we recommend, if, if, with the hotel, if you approve it, is that they have a, their own separate entrance and exit points from in and out of the hotel. The other thing I wanna talk-
Sorry, your time's up. You only have three minutes.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, my name is Malcolm Williamson. In June, I purchased one-thirty-five Royal Drive, which shares a hundred and eighty-two feet of common property line with the proposed development. On October fourth, I sent numerous questions. I, my M O F is added to the fact there will be a hotel. My concern is the PD text in Good Faith had a natural buffer of fifty feet and the privacy fence. It was comforting to know the privacy fence will be back in place because it wasn't on the original plans we received for the previous meeting. But the state of that natural buffer is very misrepresented in the sightline review that was presented to us. It shows nice lush cedar trees, which in fact, it's mostly, which I took pictures today, and I'll be happy to present those to the board if allowed, showing that it's mostly scrub brush, oak trees with no low branches. So the hotel, second, third floor will have a clear view to my back door and my patio. And I just, and I was not offered or notified that we could meet with the owners to go over our concerns, mostly for landscaping and to find out what protection is there for that buffer, if it does start into decay. Are there means where us is, can work with the owners, say, hey, can we plant some trees ourselves? Or something to assure that the sightline that my daughter visits and she's sunbathing, some guy sitting in this hotel is not taking pictures of her, because there's a clear, visible sight to my backyard. And that's really the biggest concern I have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm Joe Burns. I'm the president of Royal Oaks Homeowners Association. We did meet with the property owner. We did discuss some of our concerns. And since then, we have realized there are some other issues towards the drainage that he was talking about. I live in Royal Oaks. We do have drainage issues, and, you know, I don't know how all that works, but I do understand that Georgia does have a nuisance law that's associated with this, and that nuisance law is fifty-one dash nine dash seven. I believe all y'all have received a copy of that. Now, with that nuisance law, we're, we're here to tell you that we have drainage issues, and we do have flooding at times. Now, accordance to this nuisance law, once we know that, or you guys know that there's an issue, and then if we do flood and there is damage, then of course, the municipality and the property owners can be held liable for those. So before you look at the drainage system here, when's the last time that drainage system's been cleared out? I've been there for twenty-something years, and I have never seen anybody come and clean that drainage system out. The other thing, too, my road floods. Every time it rains, it floods. Street floods, culvert floods, water runs over. When you start inundating more water into our development, I believe we're gonna have a little bit more issue than just, just, oh, well, it seems to be adequate. When I look at things towards flow rate or cubic feet per second or something that, that nature, now, okay, I get some of that. But my biggest concern is, is that once this backs up, where's it gonna back up to? It's gonna back up into our neighborhood. That's the big concern. We have adjoining neighbors that live behind this, right at the hotel, and now we're talking about bringing the hotel up even higher for variances, and we're gonna have people looking straight back into a hotel. And, and that, that becomes an issue. I do appreciate the, the owner having us over and talking about, you know, the lights and that type of deal. We're concerned about noise pollution, light pollution, et cetera. But I think the biggest issue that we, we're gonna have is the drainage. When hurricanes come through here, they're unforgiving. And, you know, we, we are in a flood area. We, I mean, our neighborhood, the flood boundary runs right through our neighborhood. And if you inundate our neighborhood with more water and you just keep this water coming, this is only just one development site that we're referring to here. There's other sites down there, vacant land that's there, too. You're gonna keep sending that water down our way? That, that becomes an issue, so. Until some type of, somebody looks at this and decides what type of water flow that we can handle, or maybe even redirect that water flow. All right? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Supposed to be evening in it. I'm Gene Lee. I live in one-oh-seven Queens Court in Royal Oaks. Been there for twenty-three years. Not wanting to repeat the same things over and over, but the drainage issues are a big deal with us. We've, we flood quite frequently, some of the areas, especially the ones that are right behind the hotel site. I think a big, something that would help that a great deal would be if the county would come in and address those, those easements. They've never been addressed since I've been there in twenty-three years. So if they could be cleaned out, that would help us a lot. But also, Chris mentioned about the fencing. What height fence do you, are you gonna go back with?
Eight feet.
Eight feet? Okay. But, and we, but we recognize Mr. Patel's right to develop his property, and we, we, there could be a lot worse things there, but if we could get these other issues addressed so that we could mitigate these issues as far as drainage and light intrusion, and I would request that the, the commissioners reject the various terraced height strictly because of the, the fact that the people that are gonna be right behind him are gonna be looking at the second, third floor windows. I would request to reject that. And that's all to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing done, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing done, seeing none. Public comment for the site plan amendment for SP forty-eight fifty-two is closed. Mr. Amos, you wanna address any of these issues, or you just wanna?
Sorry, one of them I meant to address to begin with, and I got sidetracked and didn't do it. So I have reviewed the traffic study that was done for the Pilot Travel Center or Rhino Travel Center, I'm not quite sure which one it was. That facility was gonna generate about eight times the number of trips as, as the hotel is. And it was located much closer to the interstate. But I did use the data from their traffic study, and then I did a trip generation for our project. So the, the thing that we're most concerned about usually are AM and PM peak hour and what impact that's gonna have on the roads. And reviewing the traffic studies and some other data and assigning the number of people that are gonna turn left and turn right coming out onto seventeen. What I have determined is that at AM peak hour, we're gonna have eleven, we're gonna have thirty trips out of the hotel at AM total, leaving the hotel at AM peak hour. Eleven of those are gonna go eastbound to Brunswick and twenty back to, back to the interstate. PM peak hour, we're at thirteen and twenty-five on that same split. So the frontage road was designed to handle all of the parcels that are on that piece of property. It was designed as part of Brampton so that all of those parcels would have limited access to US seventeen. So if we have some traffic stacking up on the frontage road, that's not going to be, number one, I don't think it's gonna have, our project's gonna have a huge impact on it. But the frontage road then feeds traffic onto seventeen, which is where the, the bigger problems are. In addition to that, the people parking on the frontage road is a traffic enforcement problem, and they're probably parking there now because there's nothing there. And once there is a development that's using that to access the, the property, then if they're parking there, we'll have to get the Glen County Police Department involved to get out there and ticket people and, and keep them out of the road. And that's a public right-of-way, it's not a parking lot. I have spoken to Public Works about the drainage issues on the existing ditch, and they're gonna meet me out there to look at that ditch, and let's see how we can get some maintenance done, removing vegetation and doing more regular maintenance on that ditch. And we're gonna do that after, after the meeting. I'm not sure exactly when we're gonna do it, probably in a week or so. And once again, the, so the height of the building, the roof height in the ordinance, which is what we're going on with the, with the height of the building, the projections that stick above that don't have any impact from people looking out of the hotel, 'cause there's no occupied space up there. It's all, it's just all parapets to hide the HVAC equipment and the elevator equipment that's on, that's mounted on the roof. But the sightlines out of the third floor are what, are gonna be the same regardless of whether the parapet extends above or not does extend above. It's a much better-looking project if we can hide all of that. Okay?
Any questions for the applicant commissioners?
I, I have.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead now.
Somewhere along the way, we did talk about a hydrology study, correct? That will be done before the permit is pulled to build this?
It has to be. Glen County will not issue the permit unless I give them a full-blown drain, grading and drainage plan and hydrology study that shows what this, the impact this site's gonna have on them.
So in essence, if this hydrology study comes back and says it's gonna have a negative impact on Royal Oaks, we won't be able to get a permit for this?
Well, then what we would end up having to do is figure out how to temporarily store more water on site below the parking lot or something else to be able to make that work. And I, I wanna point out again that that ditch, the big ditch that we're draining into, was constructed as part of Brampton Park to be a stormwater detention facility. So we're merely discharging into that same ditch, and when I do my hydrology study, I will have to look at what the maximum discharge over that weir wall and through the outlet structure is. And obviously, the goal is to limit it to what it is right now, to not increase the runoff at all.
And the second, the second thing I have, Mr. Amos, is a, a product of this motel being built, you said that you did have Public Works coming out to work on the ditches and to clean them out and get the vegetation out, correct?
Yes, I spoke with the Public Works engineer, and he's gonna have people meet me out there to look at what kind of maintenance can be done on that ditch.
Okay. The third thing, third and final thing I have, I already know the answer, but I'm asking you to verify. I, I think I know the answer. If you applied to the state to get a cutout, a, a, a entrance and exit for this motel to come off of seventeen, they're gonna deny you.
Absolutely.
Because the frontage road was designed, and it's been approved and planned for every commercial development to leave that development to get on seventeen by the frontage road.
Yes, sir. There is zero chance that-
Do we have any idea with that brush, and I, I've been by there a hundred times, the brush, would a three-story building, basically give a sightline into several of the backyards, or is it hard to? I know we'd move it back a little bit.
It's, it's really hard to tell. I did go out and measure the heights of the trees, but of course, it's hard to tell what the density at that elevation is.
Yeah.
But the buffer, the fifty-foot buffer is an undisturbed buffer. Now, if, if vegetation were to start dying in there or something, I'd have to ask my client whether he'd have a problem with trying to supplement that.
Is the nature of the water, can I say it was undisturbed?
See, and I, I don't think we're supposed to get in the buffer at all. So I think that the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer was intended to be just that, undisturbed. Maybe it could be fertilized, maybe it could be cleaned out a little bit to let the vegetation grow a little better.
Yeah, maybe thin it out so it can maybe grow a little higher.
Right.
Can I ask one question concerning that? If a concerned homeowner, I think that gentleman, I think he said his name was Mr. Williams? I believe I built your house, sir, at one-thirty-five Royal Oaks. If he was to go out there one Sunday afternoon and plant five or six pine trees in that buffer, nobody's gonna slap his wrist about it.
I don't think so.
If we used to plant a Cypress tree or a cedar tree or what have you for more privacy?
Absolutely. I don't, I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah, I, I don't think so either.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Need a motion?
I'm, I'm trying to pull it up. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass Site Plan forty-eight fifty-two, three-ten Frontage Road.
Second. Any conditions on it, commissioners? Or just straight pass?
Just straight pass.
Oh, then I withdraw my second.
Okay.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
To, to withdraw the motion? What are we getting a second on?
Your motion. Nobody's seconded.
Okay. Can I rescind that motion so we can?
Yes, you can.
Yes, sir. I'd like to rescind the motion on Site Plan forty-eight fifty-two.
All right. We're back to square one. Commissioners? You can motion to approve the conditions and I'll say.
Okay. What are our, the conditions? All right, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to pass Site Plan forty-eight fifty-two with conditions.
All right, sir. Do we, do we need to state the conditions? Yes, sir, you need to state the conditions.
All right. The conditions that the county recommended, which would be the conditions to approve the original site plan, applicant thirty, uh, forty-seven thirty-five will be required by the current applicant. The applicant will provide Glen County with an updated drainage study for the site, and the study will be submitted at the time of application for construction plans or a commercial building permit.
Have a second motion.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. We got some more, we, we, we have some more conditions here we need to, the county suggested for us. The height limit, with, with the exception of the additional five foot above maximum permitted height, will be granted to allow the parapets and elevators. I second that. Okay.
All right. Is that clear, staff? Got it? Mr. Attorney, we're clear? All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All of us in favor of approving SP forty-eight fifty-two with the conditions? Sixty-five, I raised your right hand. Say, easy now, miss. Thank you. All right. Zoning decisions and additional use permits. ZM forty-eight seventy, Majestic Oaks Phase Two, Plan Development District Amendment, request to amend the Majestic Oaks Plan Development PD District, ZM. All right. Please. All right, we'll start, we'll try this again. ZM forty-eight seventy, Majestic Oaks Phase Two, Plan Development District Amendment. Shh, 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 folks. Hold the noise down. Request to amend the Majestic Oaks Plan Development PD District, ZM fourteen oh three and ZM eighteen dash sixty-six to revise the master plan and clarify uses and development standards. Approximately eighty-eight acre property is located at thirty-five forty, Highway eighty-two and one-oh-five west, excuse me, long way south. Parcel number zero-three nineteen-nine-three-seven. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering Agent, Renee Dossi, Spartan Development Group Incorporated.
Thank you. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM forty-eight seventy, Majestic Oaks, Phase Two Plan Development District, and this is an amendment to the two existing Plan Development Districts that do apply to the property. And this is the property in question. So this is Highway eighty-two, heading, heading west and north on this view. Majestic Oaks, the existing neighborhood, kinda wraps around right here. And then there's existing parcels that have not been developed. So there's a parcel here, I'm sorry, this is all one parcel, but this is, this is the area as well as here, and then it wraps around and does touch eighty-two over here. There's a parcel here that is part of one of the plan developments, but it has a different ownership, and it is not part of your, of the application as before you this evening. So there's a variety of different aspects- So there's a variety of different aspects of this amendment to the plan development. Part of it is to clarify the development standards and clarify the uses on the property. There's been some different entities involved in, in the property throughout the years. You know, there's initial phase that was developed and, or a plan development that was approved in the early two thousands. There was another amendment, part of the parcel was then amended further. So in order to really stream, I guess, clarify development standards and really consolidate the standards for the entire parcel, to make it clear what can be developed, as well as update the master plan to truly reflect, you know, what's been, what's been developed out there and then what really is the, the future plan to develop the property further. So that's, that's a lot of what this will entail. Some of you may have been on the, may have been on the commission a couple of years ago. In 2019, there was a proposal to do some amendments to this area a couple of years ago. That, that did end up getting tabled, and then this proposal is before you for the majority of the property, but not, not all of the property that was part of the 2019 one. So this is a copy of the plan development text, and this does, like I said, consolidate the standards and the uses for that entire parcel and the undeveloped area that Spartan Development Group owns. And this was in your packet, and the packet's also online. So this is the proposed master plan. So what they're showing here, here is the access to Majestic Oaks, right off of eighty-two here. This area, that's a fuchsia color. What they're proposing to do here is keep it single-family development in line with all the other development that has been started at Majestic Oaks. The area over here would be multi, could be multifamily or single-family. They haven't specified exactly what type of development might happen there, but it could be either of those uses. And then there's a kind of a dark green, it's hard to see on this map here, that fronts eighty-two, and this is proposed as highway commercial uses. And so this just kind of outlines a little bit further. And I do have a chart later on the presentation that does kind of compare some of the, the uses, but currently, what the plan development text allows for this fuchsia area is, is actually less dense, I'm sorry, more dense than what is proposed currently. So currently, what's proposed, I'm sorry, currently what's allowed is sixteen units per acre, more in line with the county's medium residential zoning district. So sixteen units per acre is what is allowed here now. That's also sixteen units per acre is what's allowed up here, and then there is some commercial uses allowed over here. So where, where the colors are showing, the GR zoning, this is a reduction in density. They're proposing the ten units per acre. Down in this fuchsia area, they are limiting it to single-family homes only, and the minimum lot size would be six thousand square feet. Currently, the average lot size in Majestic Oaks averages about eight thousand square feet, but there are some that are smaller and some that are larger. The existing current PD does allow a variety of lot sizes, as small as four thousand square feet. So six thousand square feet is not, is pretty much in line and with what they currently are allowed, and it does, you know, kind of add into consistent minimum lot size instead of having these kind of varied lot sizes. And up in this area, currently under the PD, multifamily is allowed at the sixteen units per acre, as I mentioned, and so the proposal is to keep multifamily as allowed, but reduce the density of ten units per acre. Now, in the commercial area up here, this is where some of the uses are intensifying. So the current uses that are allowed are more akin to local commercial uses in our zoning code, and so some of the uses that would be allowed under the proposal are more intense. So here's just kind of a breakdown of, of the commercial uses that are currently allowed in the PD. So as you can see in this list, it's more similar to what we, what we have in our local commercial zoning. And then in the proposal, they're proposing to allow everything that's permitted in highway commercial. And so this is the list, and there are a number of additional uses that would be allowed at a highway commercial. So these are your proposed, or possible actions. This is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicants. Thank you.
Steph. Would you put the proposed uses for commercial back up there, please? So where they're wanting to build the, I can't remember the color.
Dark green.
Dark, yeah, but on the other side of it, on the other side of dark green, where they want to put those homes in there. Yeah. Down next to that highway commercial, they could put a, a truck stop or something like that in there.
This area right here?
Yes.
That area is-
Well, if you go back to proposal, that's, that's the proposal.
Oh, I saw it. So, yeah, so this appraisal just applies to this piece that touches eighty-two. This entire parcel is another ownership and not part of this application.
Right, but go back, okay. But the truck or transportation terminal, that's what they're proposing if we approve this, to put in there, is that what?
That is correct, yes, sir. Yeah, so they haven't specifically said what, what kind of use might go in there, but they would be allowed potentially a truck or transportation terminal, amusement center.
Also, under the private or semi-private club, lodge, union hall, or social center, if somebody wanted to put a strip joint in there, they could?
Possibly. We do also have some adult commercial uses, different code for that, but, but possibly that could be allowed.
Or a, or a radio or TV antenna tower, maybe?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Steph? Commissioners? Will the applicant come forward?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering, here to answer any questions you may have. A couple of things. One is, I think just the intent of the, the whole reason we're, we're at the, this rezoning as it is. The current owner wanted to go in and develop the lots as it was. We didn't have any intention of doing a rezoning at all. But per how code is written, if we don't follow the master plan- If a road shifts or we changed an access for internally, if we decided to redo some of the lot layout, we don't have to be held to have to come back through rezoning again. There's no intention of, of doing anything outside of what is currently zoned, and we're, we have all expectation that it's going to be single-family homes. They want to build, they want to build homes. It's already zoned for multifamily on the other side. It's already zoned for commercial. We wanted to bring it in line with what current zoning is, with how the parcels are already, zoning already allows for our six residential, six thousand, sixty-foot wide lot, six thousand square foot. It's probably going to be over that, just to be more compatible with how the, the lots currently lay out and sit. With regards to the commercial, there's no intent right now of anything commercial. I think that the, the highway commercial just is, is a, is a standard zoning that we chose. Local commercial fits, that's fine. We're not opposed to limiting any of it. There's no real intent right now for any development. But with regards to, to your question, Mr. Strickland-
Let me, let me stop.
Yep.
Go back up there to the, so you would have no problem, go back to the commercial. So you'd have no problem using the current permitted uses and stick by that instead of the proposed? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I don't think we have any objection at all.
You could just strike the proposed and just keep the current permitted?
So, you know, we, we had a, we had a conversation with staff about this earlier this week, and I think there was a point that we got to that it was making a change from, from my standpoint on that, in, at that late in the game, would have had to go through the whole process of, of being reapplied. If you wanted to hold us to a local commercial, I don't think that's going to be an objection. I don't think there's any objection at all. That would, would be a, I think that would, that would be well within your rights to be able to ask for that.
We could put that on there as a condition.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't think that would-
You couldn't, you couldn't use any of the proposed permitted?
Just use under, the, well, you could use the, the, and we'd have to defer to will on this, how we could, how we could word this, but if we wanted to strike through the highway commercial and put it back to local commercial-
I don't know how Aaron feels about being called will.
I'm sorry, Aaron. I apologize.
Also, if, if you're going to increase the size of this subdivision, are there any plans at all to put a second entrance?
So, so for the development on the other side of Majestic Oaks, which I call the north side, there would be, there would be another road that connects all the way through to eighty-two that, that loops it back around when that is developed. The intention right now is to, to finish out the inside of Majestic Oaks. I think they've been in a, a very long process of trying to get some lots platted. We're coming in mid, mid-game on this to try and help pick up and expedite some of that, which is what started this whole conversation with the rezone anyway, is that we, we wanted to start picking up, you know, finishing out the rest of the interior lots on that, where we came up to the original, two thousand and one Scarlet Plantation master plan was not in accordance with this. And on top of that, this, this is one parcel, one, one, I'm sorry, one parcel, and it is, it's governed by two PD texts. So that's where it gets really confusing, and then one side allows for a different density than the other, which is more intrusive, and it just gets extremely confusing and a lot more complicated to try, to try and sort out. And as opposed to spending a lot of Aaron's time on trying to get this stuff resolved, I think that it's easier to, to just come back and clean it all up with a, with a master plan and just go to a traditional zoning inside those, although it is a PD text.
So after all you said, eventually, there will be a second-
Yes, sir, there will be. Yep.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for Mr. Hunt. On that portion of property that is currently is on highway commercial, do you have any idea about the size of that or what, how many acres is that?
I, I think it's roughly five acres. It might be slightly less than that, and, and the, the exact, again, we get into, if, if we, if we, if we say that it's three acres and we come in and we're going to do three point two, then it's a rezone. If it's, we come in and it's two point eight and we want to do the rest of it residential, then it's a rezone. So I don't want to limit it to what it exactly is, but I, I will tell you, there's no intent right now of any development. They don't have anything in mind for it. I think it was just an afterthought that there is a section that could be used as it, as commercial because it's already zoned commercial, that we just want to keep it as it currently is. We don't want to make too many changes to it. Let's keep it as, as it's currently zoned, but let's clean up the zoning to make it more in line with what current, current zoning allows.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioners? All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come up to the podium to state your name. Each speaker has five minutes, and it's limited to thirty minutes for each side, so use your time wisely.
Donna Collins. I reside at two five three Long Way South in Majestic Oaks. Our concerns are CP forty-three eighty shows future plans to develop an additional twenty-eight single-family residences, home sites. Those future homeowners would use the single entrance that is now used by the fifty-two existing homes in Majestic Oaks. It is already difficult to exit the subdivision due to traffic on Highway eighty-two. With this new development, there would be eighty homes using that one entrance, and when construction begins, it's going to cause additional and continual traffic burdens. It is our understanding that the fire department requires a second entrance if there are more than thirty homes in a subdivision. We are not aware of any plans for a second entrance, and our subdivision is currently not in compliance. Also, water and sewer for the next twenty-eight homes are to tie into the existing water and sewer lines. Homes built between 2017 and 2018 began to negatively affect the water pressure and sewer system. The addition of twenty-eight new homes will create a further burden on the existing systems unless it's addressed and corrected before new construction begins. Drainage continues to be a problem with the existing residences. Several homeowners have had to redo their landscaping due to the standing water that remains several days, up to a week or more, after rains. Rains will flood the yards, overrun the sidewalks, and flood the streets, and standing water is near our roundabout and it deteriorates the street and has caused potholes. Unless drainage is acknowledged and corrected by Spartan Development Group, the current issues are only going to continue to worsen and cause further damage. Spartan Development Group is in control of the HOA for Majestic Oaks. They are located in Jacksonville, Florida. Since two thousand and five, when the first home was constructed, there's only been one annual homeowners association meeting as required by our covenants, and that meeting was in April 2019, after homeowners were persistent that we meet and have a meeting. And since then, we've requested minutes from that meeting to no avail. We pay mandatory annual homeowner dues for the substandard and non-existent upkeep and maintenance of the entrance landscaping, common areas, street signs, mailboxes, and overall property management. We received an email July first, 2021, stating that we should soon, that we should see fresh pine straw in the common areas and addressed a few other maintenance issues. To date, that email wasn't worth opening. Berkshire Hathaway was both the listing and selling agent when I purchased my home in 2018, and I was told and sold on the future amenities of that subdivision, which were to include a pool, playground, clubhouse, and et cetera, when the next, when a certain number of homes sold in the next phase. A master site plan should have been created for approval before Spartan Development began construction in two thousand and five, and Stephanie is not certain where that master plan site is filed with Glen County. And what is the master plan for construction for the next twenty-eight home sites? Will their infrastructures adhere to the aesthetics that are currently in place? Sidewalks, curbs, gutters, streetlights, common areas, street signs? As controllers of the HOA, will Spartan Development Group maintain those infrastructures and amenities and common areas? Past and present adherence and commitment to Majestic Oaks by Spartan Development Group is an indicator of future development and compliance. Located out of state, does Spartan Development Group have a present interest or a long-term interest in the future of what Glen County and property owners in Majestic Oaks envision? In conclusion, this is going to be an ongoing issue in our neighborhood unless there's a check and balance system between the Planning and Zoning Commission, Division, the commissioners we elected, and the mainland planning commissioners that are appointed by our elected commissioners. As mainland planning commissioners, you are the advisory board to Glen County Commissioners. The current condition of the Majestic Oaks neighborhood and the responsibility to comply lies solely with Spartan Development Group. If we, as current homeowners, can't rely on them to fulfill their obligation and commitment to us, are we to assume they will do so with the next phase in development of twenty-eight additional home sites? And for the reasons stated above, I respectfully request that you deny. ZM forty-eight seventy, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me, let me, let me real quick. Let me real quick, just address your, your concern about the entrance. That's a fire standard, and it has not yet been developed by Glen County at some point in time. It may be, but at this point in time, it's not. So it's, it's a requirement that a certain part of the fire department has nationally. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Marion McGraw. I live at two forty-eight Long Way South. And I want to discuss the highway commercial section. And in January of two thousand and nine, ZM one four oh three was approved. The applicant was Wayne Neal, the Regency Group- The applicant was Wayne Neal, the Regency Group Agent for Spartan Development Group and Bo Powell Incorporated. The owners applied for changes to provide for the multifamily dwellings north of Majestic Oaks Drive. At that time, the commercial area was shown as the property which had frontage on eighty-two, including, uh, twenty acres that is part of that. Whoops, my little thing's not working. Anyway, it's just below the HC that you see there. All that is part of Bo Powell's. It's part of the planned development. And it was all, um, listed as local commercial. They gave specific, uh, permissions in that application, which was approved, for exact things that could go there. And these are some of the things on that list. Barber and beauty shops, bookstore, confectionery, ice cream store, convenience store, delicatessence, restaurants, offices for professionals like doctors, attorneys, et cetera, businesses involving this, uh, rendering of personal service, retail wholesale business, churches, synagogues, temples, other places of worship. That was approved in January of two thousand nine. In contrast, as, as you were able to see, and some of us were not able to see, the things that would be permitted under highway commercial, according to section seven one three of the Glen County zoning ordinance, would permit vastly different and more intense uses. Some of these things could be amusement centers, outdoor commercial recreation, truck or transportation terminals, automobile, mobile home or travel trailer sales lot, hotels, motels, uh, private schools, official office buildings, repair garage, car wash, service station, drinking establishments, et cetera. If this rezoning to highway commercial is approved, it would set a precedent for Bo Powell, which owns the twenty other acres that face eighty-two, to come back and say, now we want highway commercial too. At present, there is no highway commercial on the east side of Highway eighty-two north from the intersection with Blythe Island Highway. According to the maps available online, it is all residential, local commercial, forest agriculture, and planned development. This goes along Highway eighty-two for a number of miles. According to the future land use map, the whole area around Majestic Oaks maintenance, upkeep, and fire department guidelines, life for those of us living in Majestic Oaks would drastically be reduced in quality. And this is not a life that any of us want to become a reality, where we have to fight the traffic and the noise and the cars coming in for business and no playgrounds for the children. The drainage issues, the sewer issues, the, the water pressure issues, all those are going to be intensified unless they are addressed by the developer. So I respectfully submit that we would request that you deny this. Or if it is approved, it is approved with conditions that would meet our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's John Sheldrick. I live at three eighteen Long Way North. Um, intentions are great. My family was sold on the intentions of having a, a pool put in our community, a playground as well. Uh, I can't speak of the intentions of the, the developer. However, my concern is the commercial area. My son is a police officer for the city of Brunswick. I have two younger sons as well. We've invested in the city of Brunswick and our community. Uh, we'd like to see our community grow, but in a safe manner. If we rezone that for intensified commercial use, uh, I fear that things like another hotel will bring more vagrants. Things like another gas station will bring more vagrants. We've already had behind our, our house, actually, an issue with people camping in the woods right behind the RV park that's right there. Uh, with this development here, it's going to develop and, and bring more things like that to our area. Less community and more commercial isn't always a good thing. The money sounds great, but at what cost? We've already approved what appears to be a Buc-Ee's. How many more gas stations do we need? We've already discussed a hotel tonight. We don't need any more hotels. So if this developer has no issue with reverting back to prior standards of a cafe or something local, I propose that we just grant him that request and deny this and go back to the way it was. Uh, I greatly appreciate your consideration. I hope that it doesn't fall on deaf ears. Uh, we're a good community, and we'd like to stay that way. If this is approved, a lot of houses are going to be put up for sale, including ours. I don't want to do it, but I'm not going to live in something that is unsafe for my children and family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm Whit Chapel. Uh, I live at two ninety-nine Long Way South. I'm representing the, the residents of Majestic Oaks that were unable, um, to, uh, to speak tonight or, or be here. So ladies and gentlemen, if you would, to the Honorable Mainland Planning Commission, we are residents of Majestic Oaks subdivision and oppose ZM forty-eight seventy. The proposed addition of twenty-eight single-family homes on the south side of Majestic Oaks will add to traffic issues caused by eighty homes attempting to enter, to use and enter one entrance. According to the fire department requirements, any subdivision with more than thirty homes must have a second entrance. We are already out of compliance. There are issues with low water pressure, and at times the sewer system seems to be overloaded. Twenty-eight additional homes to the same system is going to cause future problems. Drainage has, have been mentioned, standing water is a problem in many homeowners and is causing pavements to deteriorate. Adding twenty-eight homes will cause problems unless adequate provisions are provided suitable drainage. Spartan Development from Jacksonville, Florida, as you've heard, is in charge of the Majestic Oaks HOA. Upkeep and maintenance in the common areas and entrance landscaping has been below standard. In spite of numerous complaints, little has changed. The lack of, of the promise of amenities that also have been addressed. With more development, this could lead to more areas not kept up by the HOA. Several times in the application of rezoning, applicants admit that the existing planned development guidelines have not been followed. This brings a lack of confidence that the new amended plans would adhere to. The request to rezone commercial area highway commercial is a great concern. The current planned development documents approved in two thousand nine was very specific guidelines for the commercials such as barber shops, bookstore, ice cream store, uh, business rendering personal services. Highway commercial would open the door for hotels, motel, service station, amusement, whatever. It would be a precedent, almost twenty acres affronting Highway eighty-two to be rezoned. Of course, I'm concerned with VR property taxes. The future land use of the map of Glen County shows the Majestic Oaks and the surrounding properties further along Highway eighty-two's residential planned development or farm and agriculture. The residents, of course, in Majestic Oaks respectfully ask that you deny approval for ZM forty-eight seventy. And I'd like for any residents that are here tonight to stand for a second, just to let them know how you, if you support this letter. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. And, and just a quick note. Uh, I'm, we are a new resident, uh, to this, uh, neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. The folks, it's like a family. Uh, we picked it for that reason from day one. Uh, we've worked together. Yes, there's some issues there, but this is going to add a lot more. And I, I know that it's going to cause people to leave, and I'd hate to see such a great neighborhood break up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Board. For the record, my name's James Harden. I don't know if you remember me or not, but all of your faces are familiar to me. So, the last time I was here, I don't know if it was Planning Commissioner or other commissioner, I warned, we would be, we would be back here again with the same issue, with the same neighborhood. Ms. Leaf mentioned back in two thousand nineteen, when we hear about that, uh, frontage piece of property, which is zoned right now as, uh, local commercial. It was voted down, by the way, not tabled or somehow just pushed away from the table. I mean, it went for vote and it was denied. So, wonderful, great. Now here we are again with the same issue, plus another request to change zoning. And, and I, the gentleman that spoke so passionately before me, I mean, I, I hate to be redundant, but I agree with him hundred percent. Well, let's grant them their wish and say, if you're not going to change it, okay, fine with us. But for some reason, we're here on the highway commercial, which was already voted down in two thousand and nineteen, and nothing's changed. And as, as a matter, the way I see it, that's even a worse proposal than before because you're cutting off what used to be, uh, neighborhood property. But to address the point, why are you even asking for a change if you're not going to change anything? Why are you asking for a zoning change if the buildings are going to stay the same? Well, I mean, I think I know why. I haven't been through, since two thousand and eight, all of these experiences with, as everybody has heard, Spartan Development. What, they're getting, they're going to go ahead and get their zoning change, and then, oh, I suppose another, within six months, we'll get a, uh, a planned development, which is going to look nothing like what they're saying now. That's what I, that's what I predict. So, if you want to keep the east side, the little pink zone, um, it's currently a single-family. They want to change it to general residential. What does that mean? It means liberty to do what they want, which is, whichever is convenient. I'm sure they want to get out of this project as quickly as possible. And you know what? I wish they would too. But I wish they would finish it as they've not only proposed to us, but to you, Glen County. They have their planned developments. They were submitted. They asked for their zoning requests. And then, two thousand nine, what was it, five, I think it was a change, two thousand nine, two thousand nine seventeen, I believe they asked for another change. I don't see any proposal. I haven't found any new proposal of what they're, what they're trying to do with the blue zone. I have seen one for the, well, it expired. Same with the, with the, with the pink zone. So, yeah, let's take them at their word that they're not going to change anything and leave the zoning alone. Because otherwise, you're giving them carte blanche to basically create an entirely new planned development. The only thing, you know, the basis, the foundation of the planned development is the zoning, is it not? I mean, what else restricts them? Law, not their promise. I mean, if you read their contract, which I should have done more carefully when I purchased. The only thing that binds them is law, the zoning. So, I echo my neighbors. They all spoke eloquently. And, you know, they're not even attorneys, and they, they're doing a better job than I am. They've done their homework. So, um, there is no reason right now to change anything. They have no proposal. They have an empty promise. Empty promises that we have had year, for years. I won't say year after year. It just, this, this ugly monster keeps rearing its head every now and then. So, the final thought is, without these disclosures, without a proposal, without a development proposal, I do not think that we are in a proper legal posture for you to vote. How can you vote on something that you have no idea? You have no idea what, you have no idea what the intention is, but you have no commitment in writing in which to bind them. You're just, like I said, you're going to give them carte blanche, carte blanche. And that's how eventually we, you know, you end up in court. Things like carte blanche, empty promises, and then disappointment. And I see a lot of people that are going to be disappointed. I'm asking you to deny it. Again, just like in two thousand nineteen, when they wanted to change to highway commercial, that local commercial section, that, it was nineteen point eight eight acres. I do remember that. Nothing good can come of that, except to just, you're going to put highway commercial next to residential. And God knows what it's going to ultimately turn out to be. And yes, my neighbor was right. That's going to be the foothold for the local commercial to turn into highway commercial, and we'll have a huge section right there, right along our frontage. And I have no problem with... I ask for just ten more seconds. I have no problem with development, just like I said in two thousand nineteen. I just don't want it in my backyard. Thank you.
I have a question. Come to the podium, Serge. State your name.
Jerry Harvey. I live at two fifty-two Long Way South. Am I correct in reading this on the bottom there that says, on the GR zoning, single-family only? Ten units per acre, six thousand square foot minimum lot size? An acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. If you multiply six by ten, you get sixty thousand square feet. How do you get ten units in an acre? That's six thousand.
I'll let the applicant address that when he comes back up to the microphone.
Sir?
I'll let the applicant address that when he comes back up to the microphone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Jenny, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just realized... My name is Jenny Ngo, and I live at one eighty-nine Majestic Oaks. I live right under the word acre, so I am two hundred feet away from the new development. So if you look closely, uh, if you have the purple zoning, there's going to be two entrances to come in. Once you turn in and make a right, that's one. But now, that purple zone is bigger, but we only have one entrance way after the roundabout. That would be more traffic. Where I live, there's a curb that's a blind spot when people are coming out, especially if people park on the road. Also, the concern is, back in two thousand seventeen, I lived there, we had a hurricane. We did not have a drainage problem during the roundabout. After the last hurricane, after all the new developments came, we have a sinkhole right in front of that roundabout, and we have photos to prove it. It took us months to get the city to fix it. So if you add more people, more drain, we'll have more sinkholes, which we currently do have a lot everywhere. And I can prove it. I could bring photos. So if you do approve of this, um, just prove that it won't mess with the water, that you have more openings for me, and I won't be concerned for my family. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
To address the ten units an acre, that's the standard zoning that it allows for. Um, I think it's, it's written more for if, if there's going to be a multifamily development, that there couldn't be any more than sixteen units on that single acre, not that we can fit sixteen, six thousand square foot units. So the, the zoning for the ten units an acre is for, is it, sorry, is that better? I apologize. I usually talk really loud anyway, so I, I do apologize. So the zoning for the, the, the ten units an acre is typically done, it's, it's standard zoning in, in Glen County zoning ordinance. And a lot of that, the ten units an acre, is the density that typically applies to developments that are multifamily developments going up or something, that there couldn't be any more than ten, ten units on that, on that one acre. Um, with regards to this one, it, it, you can't fit ten units in an acre at six thousand square foot minimum. So obviously, the density is going to be less. But as Stephanie pointed out, the current zoning allows for sixteen units an acre with much less, with much smaller lots. What we're saying is, as opposed to having, and it broke it down to lots and sizes and patio homes and, and other things, that we want to, we want to, first, we didn't want to come through rezoning. Second, we have to because the master plan doesn't fit what's currently developed. So we have to, per zoning, we have to come back through this in order for any other developments to be even made in there. So, the, there's already platted for twenty-eight additional lots that are in there that's already going to be developed. That, that's, the, the other portion on the other side is already developed for multifamily, zoned for multifamily. The, 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 what we're asking for is a reduction in density, um... The, the, what we're asking for is a reduction in density, but then clarify it by just going, following the standard zoning, what the, the standard zoning allows for under general residential, as well as development standards and such. With regards to some drainage that's in there, I, as we start to get into more of looking at how, starting to plat this thing out and trying to do other developments, I think that's an area we're going to have to take a look at. And I have, I have sympathy for the HOA, I understand that, I'm willing to give you guys my card. I'm in a subdivision right now that's the exact same thing. Exact thing that they, they, they talked about, and I'm willing to take a look at that to see what I can do to help maybe alleviate some of the issues that they may have. Under the current PD, it does say that there would be substantial green space. I don't, there was nowhere that I've seen written that talks about a pool or any of that. But I'm not opposed to trying to champion some of these things if they think that that's going to be beneficial for it. With regards to the highway commercial, I'm not opposed to you striking that out and put a local commercial on it. I think that that would be a, a good choice for this development, and I think that that would be probably in line with what some of the homeowners are experiencing, their apprehension to. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Hunt, I think the people that live out there in Majestic Oaks would appreciate if you would champion some of their causes that they have out there. Apparently, there are some problems. You know, I'm surprised that some of the homeowners haven't taken this Spartan Development group to court to try to revise, resolve some of these issues. But anyway, that's, that's not my, you know, anyway, any questions for the applicant?
I, I, I do.
Mr. Strickland, but to address your concern, again, that, I'm very sensitive to what you just said, because again, I live in a subdivision that's the exact same issue. It's not this subdivision, but we're going through the exact same problem. And I think that there's, there's room to be able to, to turn and find some resolution to that.
Spartan Development, if I'm not badly mistaken, is the third developer that's on Majestic Oaks. Sonny Buller was the first, the people from Florida were the second, and then Spartan has stepped in after that.
Yeah, Spartans came in and, and I think they've bought that, they, they may have owned some of it, but there was, it's, it's, it's a, it's, yes, that's correct.
One of the things that these people have addressed is a second entrance. Where, where does Spartan stand on that, and what can you tell these people about, about that second entrance?
Yeah, so second entrance is, per zoning, the only, only place that is required is on the island. And I think 90, from, from, from me looking at it, over 90 percent of the subdivisions inside of the Glen County on the mainland do not have a second entrance, with many more homes than this. It is a concern, it's an area that staff's addressing with us engineers as we try to propose developments, that we're trying to add secondary entrances. I think right now, the, the only requirement is that we try and add a secondary emergency access, it doesn't have to be paid for it. The layout of this development makes it a little more challenging to add one right now at this point, just because there's no way to get secondary access short of developing a road that comes through the, the northern portion and the highway commercial. The intent is not to develop that portion yet, that is, that is slated for probably early next year, they're going to start planning that side out. So to alleviate the, the issue of how we get a secondary entrance on it now, I don't think there's a good way to do it right now as it stands. But they do intend on adding a secondary paved access on that northern side that would allow a, a secondary access out through the, what will soon be local commercial as opposed to that highway commercial.
And, and when do they plan to do that?
So they, they're, we're going to start planning out that whole side of it, early next year is when we're going to start doing the, at least the initial concepts and designs of it, work through with the owner, come up with a development that's going to be, that they're, how they're going to want to do that, they're going to want to phase that in. So it's, it's, I mean, that's, that's a lot, that's a lot of property up there to try and do, you know, 200 homes in it right now to try and develop that. I think that that's, we're probably a year or so out before we'd have something like that.
The existing homes, on average, how many square feet are they?
On the lots?
On the existing lots, yeah, and the homes that are...
You know, so they range, it's 6,000 square foot to like 8,000 square foot, maybe 9,000, what I've seen, I think that's, that's average.
So 6 to 8,000?
There's some that's less, there's some slightly less than 6,000 square foot that's in there.
But it's, it's fairly adequate to what they got.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Sherry was mentioning too, you know, I, you know, there's been a lot of promises made by three different developers, and listen to these folks tonight, you know, there's been nothing really done on any level to kind of show some sympathy or some help going forward. And, you know, we talk about an entrance, and, you know, I live out in that area, and if you, you build a home or a townhome, and you're up there near Gary Lee's, you've got a ways to go to get out of there. And, you know, you've got narrow roads already, and you've got to have a lot of kids out there playing. So I think there needs to be a lot more, you know, I can, I can appreciate building the homes, I can. But there seems to be, you know, we're maybe trying to put that cart in front of the horse, you know, and we need to maybe come with more of a, like, where is that entrance going to be? You know, in the highway commercial, I'm like Chairman Strickland, that's just, it's too, too broad-based, you know, and everything. But that's, that's my, my, my main concern is, you know, we need to have a little bit more of an idea of what Spartan's plan is, and there needs to be, there's been a lot of promises made to those folks out there. And, you know, over a period of years, and three different developers, I think have been kind of left holding the bag, you know, so that's where I stand on it, but, you know, but I'm, don't get it wrong, I would, I'd love to see the homes built out there, but we need to have a, I think, a little bit better plan. But that's all I got. Thanks, sir. Anything else? I have one more question. Maybe, maybe you did address, this gentleman sitting in the front row, he asked some mathematical questions, how you got, would you state that again, sir, so Mr. Hunt can answer your question?
He asked about the 10 units an acre, how do we, how do we get to 10 units an acre? And again, it's the, it's a standard zoning, a standard wording in zoning that is, that calculates density, and that is, the 10 units an acre is standard through all general residential and most residential zoning districts in Glen County. But that, and that doesn't mean that we can fit 10 units at 6,000 square foot on the acre, it's just that's the maximum that we can have on the acre. And typically, that applies for multifamily developments that are in there, our townhomes would be a great example, duplexes, you could kind of squeeze those things in. But it's not, it, it, with the, with the, being that it's only going to be single family, that they then have to be 6,000 square foot, 60-foot wide lots, that you couldn't get, it would be much less density than what is, than the 10 units an acre.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I had, I had a question, and it wasn't so much for the applicant, it was more for staff. Mr. Hunt said that he would be fine with striking the highway commercial, is that something that can be done here, or does that need to be done in our reapplication type area? Yeah, we can put that condition in. Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me, Mr. Harden, you seem to be the main spokesperson for the group, is that, does that help you?
It's a good start.
In 25 words or less?
It's a good start, and I, and I appreciate you giving me all the time I need to express myself, Commissioner. But the other problem is, is, as I said, and I'm not trying to be nasty about it, but, you know, the cart before the horse, the zoning without knowing, without having an idea of what to expect. So, I hope he does withdraw it, I believe he can, I believe it's proper, so, but I still think we need to at least look, look at this more before you change zoning.
So, Mr. Hunt, do you need to go back to your client and ask them about this? Is this something we should recommend?
I'm good with you making a recommendation. Yeah, I'm good with you making a recommendation that we change it to local commercial. And again, it's already zoned for what we're asking, minus the highway commercial. This is already zoned, absent of us having to come back through to update the master plan, which I think is just kind of a glitch in the, in the zoning, and I don't know, I might defer to, to the attorney, I don't, I don't think it's intentional that, that it, as the, when it was initially zoned in, in the Scarlet Plantation, they submitted a plan, but then as the houses were built, they weren't, they didn't follow that plan, even though it was in zoning. And then as it came back later in, in 2009, and there was additional PD text was added on that northern portion, it had a master plan, which kind of fit in line with the existing majestic home development, but it's not in, it's not completely in line with it. So, in order to get other houses developed per the PD text or per the zoning, we have to, we have to come back through rezoning, just because it doesn't match, the roads don't line up where they should have lined up, where they showed initially in 2001 and 2009, which is why we're, we're here to begin with. If, if zoning had a, had a, had a way of us being able to reconcile master plans that don't fit on this, and this isn't the first one we've done, we've had Tanglewood, we've had many other subdivisions that we've had to come back through because master plans build it, you know, developers change hands, they buy the property, and new guys come in, and they have a whole other idea on a road, and nobody held them to the standard that they weren't following the master plan. But we're here to kind of clean that up, and I think that's, again, you know, we're, we're asking for something that's much less dense than what's currently allowed, but we want to try and do it in a way that's going to be good for the neighborhood as well.
All right, Commissioner, thank you.
Ms. Chairman, if I can add to that, just in terms of the commercial uses, Mr. Hunt has mentioned local commercial, which is what the current uses are close to, but not exactly local commercial. So some of these, so some of these uses are kind of a, sort of a hybrid of neighborhood commercial and local commercials, so I just wanted to just make that clear, that this list is not identical to what the county's local commercial is. I mean, this is a specific use that, uses that looks like it was, you know, put together for this project in the PD text.
But it's, the left side's better than the right side.
Right, so if you, so I would say if, if this is where you're leaning to, towards as a commission, you know, keeping the uses as they are in the PD is, is what that is on the left-hand side. But if you wanted to go to local commercial, there are some different uses that are in that.
But they're not, not that extreme. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, need a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused. So, just to clarify what you just said, Stephanie, make sure I understand. And put in conditions that only the current permitted uses are options. Where do we go from there? What's, what's the best option?
So, so the H, so the PD, so it's still a planned development district, so the zoning is PD, it's not actually HC. So the PD just basically mimics the HC uses. So what, what you would do is, you know, with the condition that the planned development text would be modified to, to have the, I'm trying to think of the exact language, to include the current commercial uses. So something along that effect.
All right, Mr. Attorney. Straighten this out.
I, I think Ms. Leaf is correct. I think if you were inclined to approve it, you'd approve it as presented, but with the commercial uses remaining the same.
The county commercial uses, not the proposed.
Correct. The, the proposed commercial uses would not change if you made that motion to that effect. If, if the goal is to approve it, approve this application as presented, but to keep the commercial uses the same as they already exist, the proposed motion be to approve as presented, except to keep the commercial uses the same as currently exist today. So you, you would not be changing any commercial uses at all?
I think we're not changing. Okay. All right, Commissioners, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve ZM 4870 as presented with conditions that the permitted uses remain the same as are currently applied.
The, the commercial permitted uses.
Commercial uses, yes.
Second? Mr. Chairman, I second the motion. I'm a motion for second to approve ZM 4870 with the conditions. All those in favor, take a five away to the right hand. Who's in the right? All those to plan that. Approved? All those against?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, what, what I was saying is that the highway commercial uses are not approved. I think there's some discussion here. The action you just took, the highway commercial uses are not approved, the commercial uses remain the same as they were, which is similar but not identical to local commercial.
It wasn't commercial to you? No, it was a section. All right, there, so it, it's denied?
You approved it.
Well, it was approved, but not by the forum. It was only three to two.
That's correct, it takes four votes.
Wait a minute, four, I'm sorry, was there four? All, let me call it again. All those in favor of ZM 4870, six to five, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, I'm sorry. There is a majority. Two against? All right, you got it? All right, ZM 4870 is approved with conditions. All right.
Hey, can we make it clear, the, the zone change was not approved, correct? That section that's, that he wants, they wanted HC, where he said he would waive it, that's not approved?
Correct.
Right.
All right.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, ZM 4874, Indigo Senior Living Plan Development District, with Chris Reson Parson, 03-12470, 195 strength connectors, and a portion of a just, a jointing parcel, 03-15617, from Highway Residential Zoning District, which is newly created Plan Development District. Purpose uses of the Plan Development include independent senior living, assisted living, associated commercial services. Zachary Harris. Zachary Harris, Hunter McLean, attorney's agent for GP Mall LLC and Sanovis Bank, N.A., formerly the Coastal Bank of Georgia owners.
Morris Postal Planning and Zoning again. This site was previously approved for rezoning about two years ago. At that time, the site was rezoned from the Glen Place Mall PD to the high residential zoning district. That was for a 166-unit apartment complex. The present concept for this rezoning is 48 assisted living units in two buildings and a 90-unit independent living building. Assisted living under the county's conventional zoning is only, is allowed in all commercial districts except for local commercial. And in addition to the assisted living uses, the PD text would allow for all uses and uses in high residential zoning, including single-family, duplex, townhouse, and multifamily uses. And the PD text also permits retail personal service and food service commercial uses. And here's the zoning map showing the site north of the mall. And this is the Sanovis Bank right here. And this is the concept plan for the rezoning action. You have the two assisted living buildings here on the east, and the independent living building on the west. And these are your possible motions for the rezoning action.
Any questions for staff, Commissioners? Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant's here tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This, my name is Zach Harris, attorney with Hunter McLean, as agent here for the applicant ambling. Uh... For ambling, present is Kevin King, Joseph Johnson, and Bradley Bynum for the owner of GP Mall. Zach Albright is here as well. We're, we'd ask for your favorable consideration, and we're here to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to ZM forty-eight seventy-four? What, do they turn the lights out?
Aren't we over?
All right, folks, somebody needs to take care of the lighting.
Weird.
All right, once again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, sitting none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of ZM forty-eight seventy-four? Hearing none, sitting none. This public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve ZM forty-eight seventy-four as presented.
Second. I have a motion, second, to approve ZM eighty-four eighty-seven. All those in favor, six and five, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Conditional use permit, forty-eight seventy-two, forty-eight, forty-one, New Jessup Storage Conditional Use Permit. Request for an conditional use permit for a mini warehouse used in the commercial, uh, excuse me, highway commercial zoning district. The approximately thirteen acre property is located at forty-eight, forty-one, New Jessup Highway, parcel number zero-three, dash, zero-four, one-one-five, and some highway commercial and conservation and preservation. Zach, excuse me, Zach Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Palmetto Building Root, applicant, and Gerald Allen Zale, junior owner.
Stephanie Leaf, planning manager, CUP forty-eight seventy-two. This is, there's actually two applications on your agenda tonight for this property. It is a conditional use permit, and then also a site plan for the buildings on the So they are proposing to do climate-controlled storage, which is part of the conditional use permit. Mini warehouse is a conditional use and highway commercial. The back portion of the property is proposed as open-air parking and storage, and that is a permitted use already in highway commercial, so that's not something before you tonight, but that is, that is just part of the project as well. They're proposing a twelve-hundred square foot office, approximately ten thousand square feet, climate-controlled storage, about sixteen thousand square feet, another sixteen thousand square foot climate-controlled storage building, and then five rows of ten-by-twenty storage units, and each row contains about thirty to thirty-five units. And this is the property off of New Jessup Highway, three forty-one. So exit thirty-six is up in this direction, so coming south on three forty-one. It's just before Anderson Way. This is the highway commercial parcel across the streets for freeway commercial. It did look, it looks like this parcel was zoned to highway commercial back in nineteen-seventy-two. Initially, they had proposed to do a, a shopping center on the property, and it has been unimproved for the past fifty years. And this is the survey of the property. So, right here, I guess, early on, they initially had it as a, as a home site, I guess, prior to the seventies. This is their proposed building elevations for the climate-controlled storage. And then this is their site plan. So they, this is part of the site, you know, the site plan will be in front of you as well later on the agenda, but they are showing a type E ten-foot buffer along New Jessup Highway. And then they are showing a twelve, a type A buffer, which is twelve feet with a fence and landscaping along the climate-controlled storage, and that's also continued up along the open-air storage as well, so that would be across from these homes here. And then these are your possible actions, and this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And Jake Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering, is he representing the applicant, and I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Commissioners, questions for the staff? All right, where's the applicant?
Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, agent for the applicant, here to ask for your approval for this conditional use permit and available to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. That twelve-foot buffer, is that just a cyclone fence, or is it?
It's an opaque fence, just basically along with the, the guidelines by the county standards, so it's a combination of some landscaping, but it's going to have the fence all the way along that entire backside of the property against residential along the East Shore Drive as well.
Mr. Hightower, will there be, will there be any type of gate or anything that will allow access onto Shore Drive?
No, sir, that's not the plan at all. Basically only to have access off New Jessup Highway for concerns of not wanting to put any commercial traffic or any sort of traffic at all through the neighborhood, as well as if you were to have a gate access there, that would require extra security. And basically, they want to just have this be separate from the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing for Conditional Use forty-eight seventy-two. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come up to the podium and state your name.
Mr. Chairman and committee members, my name is Robert Manor, and I live at one-oh-six Shore Drive. The piece of property that is before you tonight stretches something like over a thousand feet from three forty-one back into Anderson Estates. Roughly half of that is open to Shore Drive. And, of course, can you back up one on your, or, okay, if you come down Shore and it makes a ninety-degree turn, okay, back up, first house. It's not, I didn't see even the best one there. I did not see as being a, a picture that would represent, oh, keep Glen beautiful. Storage areas generally have large vehicles, RVs, that won't fit in the driveway, or the boat that is sitting out in the backyard, or either the restrictions on having that type of, of equipment at your house. Also, if you, if you see those pictures, or if you look at some of the older places, you'll see that a lot of these vehicles, especially RVs and boats, become abandoned. It just seems to me as what would it, I would offer as a suggestion is that, well, I just mentioned this, of the six houses that are contingent, continued to this property, five of them, people living in there have been in there over thirty-five years, either they themselves, or their family, or family connection. I personally have lived there over fifty years. So it's a, it's a very stable area, very good neighborhood, and to me, this doesn't look really like something that needs to fit in there. As a solution, you know, if I were making recommendations, that this outdoor storage be limited to one side of the ditch. I don't know, do you see the drainage ditch? There is, there is a drainage ditch on there, and that's a, really, would be a good dividing area to separate it from a residential section that has been there for an extended period of time, and it just, you know, these people that, that put their vehicles or their, or boats and such, it's because they're wanting to get them out of their way. It doesn't seem exactly fair that you take their problem and put it right here in front of me as one of the first things I ever see as I stepped out the door. I think you stated that there would only be one access to there. Well, there's two easements. There's the drainage easement, and Glen County is big congratulated that they, they, they're ever so often cleaning out that ditch, and then they're not going to go around to three forty-one and come in. They're going to put a gate there. Same way Georgia Power has to service those lines, they have to get in. When you say that, because those gates would be locked. Okay, I mentioned that you have some pretty bad stuff that's left there, but you have some pretty enticing things that there. And if you've got a gate in the back part of the property, it's easy enough to cut that lock, go in there and get you a boat, or whatever it is. But anyway, I, I would, since this is a conditional hearing, yes, sir.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, give me thirteen seconds. Okay, I would suggest that, that, that they cut it off there. If that doesn't seem feasible in your judgment, then I would ask for a deferment, that we would have an opportunity to talk with the developer and see if we could come to some resolution.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
How are y'all doing? My name's Darrell Thomas. I've lived in Ellis Point for nineteen years. I live at three sixty-two Shore Drive, so I'm actually farther down. But, uh, we're here as a neighborhood. I mean, we don't have an HOA. These are concerned homeowners, longtime residents of this county. And the thing that we're concerned about, there's a couple of things, really. Drainage, I know y'all have heard that all night long, drainage. And people have submitted pictures to y'all about what happens when we get from two to three inches of rain, what happens. And the property running from three forty-one, what I would call the north side, back down this way, and Mr. Boatright, you'd understand this, the grade runs back down toward our neighborhood. So, when they develop and build these structures up there, I know they got to do site work, they got to bring dirt in. So what that's going to do, in my opinion, is push more water, rainwater, back toward the residences that are involved, directly involved right there. You know, and, and in doing that, in, in doing that, you've got two ways for them to do it. They can grade that parking lot out there, one way or the other. You're going to that neighborhood, or you're going stormwater runoff, is going to that creek. I've seen you fish in that creek. That, that's where it's going. You should, we have no hydrology study. We don't know anything about the water amount that's going to go into that creek. So what I'm saying is this, we don't have enough information on what's going to happen, what the fence is going to look like to block these RVs and boats and everything like that from these, being in these people's face every day. These people have older homes, but they're well-kept, they've taken care of them, Mr. Manor, for fifty years. That speaks volumes for Glen County, to me. And what we want, we're not sitting here trying to crush somebody's business opportunity. We're all open-minded. We want people to be successful in Glen County. But what we want, turnabout's fair play. We expect to have a nice neighborhood and not have to look at trash. I'm still concerned about, we have a wireline there, they say it's been decommissioned. You put RVs and boats and everything in there, we've always understood you could plant a garden. You've got a boat and an RV in there, and somebody's out of town on vacation, Georgia Power has to get in there. Who's, who's taking care of this, moving this equipment? I mean, I think that's going to be problematic. At the best, it's going to be problematic. So what I want, I, me, myself, and I think all of my neighbors want, we want a deferral time to figure out, get with the developer, and find out what's going to go on with a fence, what, hey, what their plan is for stormwater runoff, where it's going to go, how are we going to manage it as a neighborhood? Because when this is all said and done, if you guys, men and women, raise your hand and approve this, at the end of the day, when we have a flood or we have a storm, it's us dealing with it.
Exactly.
It's not y'all. And, and this is no takeaway from what the job you do. I'm just saying, it's us, this is where we live. So the only thing I'm asking you is, we need a little more time. We need a deferral, we need to talk to them and find out about the fence. What kind of fence are you going to build? Like Mr. Manor said, that ditch, you know, that, beyond that ditch is right in front of his house, Carl Arnett's house, I mean, it's, there's, you know, Tony Roddenberry's house. And I mean, and another thing, on the site plan, what is the ingress egress on three forty-one? I know they're not going to get a curb, a curb cut. Georgia DOT ain't going to give them the curb cut, I know better. So are they going to have enough room to pull in there with a, a crew cab truck and a twenty-one-foot boat? That's forty-two feet to come up in there. You're talking about a traffic hazard. I mean, that's a traffic hazard. So I just think there's a, there's a big picture here that need, needs to be, they've spent a lot of time and a lot of money doing what they've got up here right now, but I think there needs to be a little more due diligence, you know, on everybody's part, our part as well as theirs, and, and on you guys, too. And, and I would love to have y'all and encourage y'all to help us. That's all we're asking for, is some help. We're not up here being demanded, we just want some help, that's it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Douglas Flowers, I live at one forty-five Anderson Drive. My property is the one which will actually will border this property. We actually have same property line. Is it, is it permissible? Can I show, give you some pictures to see while I'm speaking? Okay. These pictures are of my mother-in-law, Joy Arnett, who lives at two fifteen Anderson Drive, her property, her yard, and also Mr. Steve Baxter's house, her neighbor who lives, I don't know what that address is, but it's at the corner of Anderson and Shore. And these pictures were taken after a hard rain last July. Mother-in-law, she got water in her house, were able to keep it from really flooding it, but that house has flooded several times over the past few years with the hurricanes, storms, hard rains. And, like I say, we're really concerned about this drainage issue. I know, I know, they said something a while ago about the building elevation or site elevation, I didn't catch it, but I know they're going to have to build this up, put pads there. And, again, I agree, the water's all going to go down into this area and create even worse problems than you see right here. This has never really been properly addressed, and it's really, really, really going to cause us an issue. Me, again, I, I also would like to have more time. I also ask for a deferral. I mean, I'm one of the ones who's going to walk out of my house and have to look at this every day. And I'm not much with construction plans, I'll be honest with you. But what I did see, it looks like that a lot of this is ridiculously close to my property line. And I've heard the fence discussed, I've heard that, you know, some asked, was it going to be a cyclone fence? Is it going to be, what type of barrier? I've heard landscaping. Well, I don't think anybody wants to walk out and see that. I need more time. We need more time to see what's going to happen here. What type of fence? Can we, can we put a barrier up here that we don't have to see this? You know, I agree, we're not trying to hurt anybody, we're not trying to harm anybody's plans. I rent construction equipment for a living. This is in my sales territory. I can make money off this project right here, but that's not our primary concern. Our concern is our living conditions. You know, like I say, we have been there a long time, we are an established neighborhood, you know, and we don't want to have something come out there that's going to bring in, you know, what is this going to do to our property values? I mean, I may never be able to sell my house. I'm already sandwiched, I will be sandwiched in between two businesses if this is approved. I already have a little plaza on one side, I mean, you know, we, I got a veterinarian there, we love them, good tenant right now, but we have always had good tenants there. And, I say, it's very, very concerning to me, and I know the rest of my, my neighbors that are here, there are others here who don't border their property, but they'll have to just look out and see it from across the street. Lighting is another concern. You know, we're going to be flooded out. I know, I noticed, you know, any of these stores, you know, they have twenty-four-seven, you know, three sixty-five access, you know, for their tenants, you know, usually have a, you know, a card they can get in, that's fine, but that means lighting around the clock. You know, we're going to be able to sleep at night. One of my, my corner rooms is a bedroom right there. You know, we don't need glaring light in our
We don't need glaring light in our faces, things that we don't know, things we just haven't had enough time to find out. I mean, that sign was put up in the neighborhood, I saw a week and a half ago. And I too would like to ask for a deferral, just for more time, to see if we can make this work, you know, if we can go with it. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I find it ironic that this, uh, this was actually zoned in nineteen seventy-two, that was the year that I was born. Obviously, there's a lot changed since I was born. When I was born, my stomach wasn't developed, and now it's a little overdeveloped. In fifty years, a lot of things change. Ellis Point is a neighborhood that I grew up knowing. I went trick-or-treating there as a kid. That neighborhood's been here for a long time. I'm a little bit surprised that, that the zoning hasn't changed in that amount of time with that highway commercial zoning protruding all the way into Ellis Point like it does, but that's, you know, things change and it happens. And I'm, I'm here, just like the rest of these guys, to ask you guys for a deferral. When this sign was put up, I was on the road to Virginia, so I've had practically no time to, uh, to look at this. I have seen the drawings, and these drawings provide little to no information on things such as front elevations, draining, pollution control, landscaping, fencing. We got a non-answer tonight on fencing. When you asked if it was a privacy fence or not, we were just told it was a fence. You have a ten-foot buffer, do you have a ten-foot buffer, two-foot shrubs, or what is it? We don't know, we don't have answers to these questions. It's been said that there's a, there's no access from, from our side of the neighborhood on Shore Drive, but you have Georgia Power that requires access. There will be a gate there. You have a county right-of-way there, it's gonna require access, there will be a gate there. Where you have these gates, you're opening a door for people who like to pay storage units. I think every storage unit in town at some point's been hit by thieves, and this one's, this one won't be an exception. The pictures that, that, that are being passed around are of different places in Glen County that have open storage. They, they were just ones that I rode by and took these pictures of this week. In highway commercial zoning, it specifically states that you can't have any junk parked there. If you look at them pictures, does that look like junk to you? Does that look? And we especially don't want that, not knowing what the fence is gonna look like to protect us from it. And if you put up a six-foot fence and you have a twelve-foot high RV, is that doing the job? In the zoning, it says you have to have adequate cover. Who determines what's adequate? Do we get to have a say in that, or we just have to deal with whatever we're given? So again, we're here just asking for a deferral so we can get some answers to these types of questions, so that we, we don't know anything about zoning. Everything that I've talked about tonight is stuff that I've looked up yesterday. So we're just asking that you guys give us some time and help us work through this with the developer, uh, with the hotel. The developer met with the community. We don't have an HOA to ask for that. So we're here, how many people are here from Ellis Point? This is our HOA, this is our community. We come together as a community to ask you to help us walk through the changes that are coming. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hey, my name is Jamie Walker. I live at one forty-four Ellis Point Way. I actually live on the total opposite side of the neighborhood, however, I just wanted to acknowledge all these guys, we've sat here for over two hours to talk to you guys tonight. We in the least would like a deferment so that we have time to get our, our, we would like more information with the developer, and I just wanted to make it clear that the key here is that we're not totally against this idea. It's just that we want to make sure that we can produce some sort of benefit, if any can be produced in this situation, because as of right now, there are none for us. So it would be appreciated if we, if it could be deferred so that we can hopefully come to some, some sort of resolution and have time to speak with the developers.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none. This hearing is closed for the conditional use permit. Where's the applicant?
Thank you for the time to address some of the concerns. So I wrote down a lot of the points that were raised tonight, so, uh, Mr. Manor went first, and he has some good points, um, asking about the, um, access for Georgia Power in the county. So Mr. Manor, as well as Mr. Hall, when the notices went out and the county citizens started to reach out to planning and zoning, I said, please go ahead and give out my, my information. And they gave out my email address, my cellphone, and I received those calls, and I took the time to walk through anything they asked until they ran out of questions. We sat down, we looked at the, while I was on my computer, we looked at the site plan, and I addressed every concern, from drainage to lighting to everything we're talking about tonight. So that is pretty much encompassing on the deferral, is that we went by the county standards on, on notices, and then also I kinda went above and beyond representing my client to make sure that anybody who had a question, I was available for them to answer anything they might wanna talk about. In terms of Georgia Power and the county easements, yes, they will have complete access to those easements. We've already talked to the Georgia Power right-of-way encroachment, uh, representative. He's aware of what we're looking at doing, and he provided us with all documentation on what we need to do to basically have this development go forward. In terms of drainage, uh, there was a comment made that, um, you know, we don't know where the water's gonna go. Well, I do know that we're gonna abide by the Stormwater Management Manual to make sure that the post-development discharge is no worse than the pre-development discharge. And in addition to that, this will not create more water, it's just basically the exact same amount of water, but when we do this, we'll be able to control where that water goes versus just sheet flowing to the path of least resistance. So if anything, it actually, there is a chance that it will help some of the issues at that corner of that street, because what we will do is we will make sure that we're graded to everything, every drop that hits that site will be accounted for and will be discharged to the marsh. In terms of how that'll affect fishing, um, the, the water's coming from the same spot up in the sky, hitting the same area, it's going down, going to the marsh. There should be no negative impacts on the marsh, other than putting a culvert access in, which will work with the Department of Natural Resources to make sure we can get that, uh, that outlet into the marsh. We'll also, we'll make sure we do have inlet filters or a, um, water quality pond, whatever's required by county engineering staff to make sure that there is no negative effects. Let's see, Mr. Flowers had a lighting concern, so we're gonna abide by section six twenty-two of the Glen County zoning ordinances to where we should not negatively impact their houses, there will be no floodlights facing anybody's residence. They will have shields to where it will be directed in a downward manner, just as if you were to have another streetlight down the, down the road from you. And then also, when we talk about, uh, we were talking about fencing, um, so I can just tell you exactly what the fence will be. It, if we go by the county standards, it says that walls will be a minimum of six feet in height opaque, meaning you cannot see through them. And it's acceptable to include construction such as a stucco cover block, brick, split fence, split face block, rid block, pressure-treated naturally rot-resistant, or PVC solid fences. So we is not, the developer's not determined exactly what kind of fence it will be, but it will abide by the county standards. It seems that a lot of the concern right now is around the open-air storage that's to the north of our, or not to the north, it's the south, to the top of our site plan right there. As highway commercial stands right now, that's an acceptable use. So if we were to go in and not put a building up there and not apply for a building permit, the entire site could be open-air storage. That's not what our developer wants to do, because he'd rather have a clean, professional-looking storage facility, because the better it looks for him, the more people are willing to store with him, and he can get their business. So it's not gonna be a junkyard of junky look of any sort. Let's see, any other things? But yeah, in terms of the deferral, I ask that we do not defer. The, uh, just getting the fact that we did do adequate notifications, and we did open ourselves up to answer any questions as well. Any other questions?
High Tower, I, uh, I got some problems with the open-air storage and the buffer and things. I mean, I agree with some of the speakers. If you drive around to some of these storage places, sometimes it just becomes a dumping ground for boats, people don't want anymore, RVs, and people don't want anymore, or vehicles people don't want anymore, so they just leave them there. And nobody takes care of it. And, you know, I understand what you said about meeting the county standard, but there's also such a thing as exceeding the county standard.
Yes, sir.
You know, if you're gonna put up an open-air storage facility, then, you know, I would suggest you put up a twenty-foot fence, you know, where it completely is blocked off. I mean, if you can't, if you don't, if you're gonna put the open-air storage out there, then at least, you know, put something up there where these people, can somebody turn off their phone? That, where people don't have to put up to that view. So, you know, I understand that, you know, as, as the engineering company and the developer and everything, the county has standards. But you can always, you know, go better than the state.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
I have a question. Mr. High Tower, is your client, I'm talking, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'd like to respond that the developer, who is the developer, he is one that's well-known within the county, and he does tend to exceed expectations. And so I do think that the comment holds true, that if he has a junky yard, then people are gonna wanna go to the fifteen other storage units that are being built right now. He wants to have a professional, clean facility so that he can have tenants that want to store with him. If they're, it's not a dumping ground, because if you don't pay your bills, it gets removed and sold. So I, I would say that, given who this developer is, that, that he will do a good job.
Yeah, okay.
Does, does this developer currently own that property?
No, sir, he does not. He is currently under due diligence with the property right now.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do. Mr. Chairman, would it, um, would it be inappropriate at this point to stipulate what kind of fence would go to cover, um, the open-air storage?
We can put whatever we want. That's why we're the planning commission. If we want them to put a twenty-five-foot high fence up there?
Well, I think twenty-five foot. I think twenty-five, what, what, I think twenty-five foot is a little excessive.
Yeah.
But, um...
But you gotta remember now, I don't mean to interrupt you, but an RV is high.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, you're...
It's not over twelve feet. RV's not over twelve feet.
I don't know. I don't have the money to afford one.
Me either, me either. And, um, i- i- if someone was standing on the ground at one of these local houses and you had a twelve-foot-high fence, he would never see a RV in there, correct?
Uh, to be honest, I cannot tell you that exact answer. I really don't have the, the knowledge as to what it would look like standing next to a fence with an RV. I just don't, I, I haven't used many RVs, to be honest.
Yes, sir.
I'd imagine that twelve-foot fence would do a very good job of screening. I would ask, um, I, if y'all have a recommendation for a size of fence, I can relay it to the developer, at which case he can say that, yes, that will not impede him using it, but we also are talking about some of the open-air storage, when the conditional use permit is for the three acres beneath it, but, but that's why we wanted to put this on there. We couldn't, the first time, first iteration, we didn't have open-air storage on there, and we said, we don't wanna submit something that's not the true use of what this land will be. So that's why we went ahead and said, this is what the plan is, the full plan, per the uses, even though it's part, not part of the conditional use permit application for the open-air storage. We wanna make sure that we were presenting what is actually gonna be there for when we go for this application.
Mr. High Tower, this is where I stand. I, I don't have a problem with the storage area, okay? It's highway commercial, but we do have to give these folks in this subdivision, Ellis Point, some kind of protection.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And we need, I don't know, I'm new to this commission, I don't know the appropriate thing to do here, but in my opinion, we need to go back to the developer, and you need to say, we need to have pictures, and we need to know what you're gonna do with this fence. And you present that to us.
May I ask that we approve it with the specifications of what size fence, fence that you would like, if it's a fifteen-foot, twelve-foot? Since he is in due diligence, if it pushes us back too far, he might just walk away from the project, and then who knows what would be next? It may be something else that's not gonna be as well-done as this one. I don't, I just don't have that answer for you. I wish he was here tonight, um, but if you were to have a stipulation on a size, then by all means, we can approve it with that stipulation. It can go to him for approval. He can, more than likely, he'll say yes, 'cause I'd say, yes, this is a really good valid concern, we should be able to screen from this neighborhood, and I don't think he'll have a problem with that. If he does, then he just doesn't purchase the property. That'd be my, my request, is that we approve it with the condition of what, what height fence he would like.
Has there been any thought to moving the open storage more to the interior of the
Mr. Strickland, I don't think they can do that, because you got the Georgia Power easements in here.
Okay, Jake, excuse me just a minute, I wanna ask Stephanie a question. We're talking about fence height. What kind of stipulations does the county have on fence height?
So the county doesn't regulate fencing in terms of giving permits for that. The buffer that Mr. High Tower was talking about, the twelve-foot buffer, a six-foot fence is the minimum. So it could be as high as someone wants to, correct?
It could be twelve feet, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could, could, do we also require that they plant some kind of shrubs and vegetation along the fence to help even make it more presentable? Because it, this is a residential neighborhood, and I understand their concerns as far as, you know, so could we put that stipulation in there also? That they, they'd be required to put, you know, a hedge?
If I may, um, the type A buffer, I've got it right here, if you would like for me to read it. It, and it does talk about landscaping. Would you like me to go through it? So the...
No, it's okay.
Well, yes, sir, but it does have, it basically has two, two scenarios, where you can have a fence on one side with, with, um, hedging on one side, or basically flop that. And so we can ask them that they have the hedging on the outside to wear the wall on the inside, which would make sense in terms of the aesthetics for the neighborhood. And that is, the plan is to have that type A buffer with the fence and hedging.
And that, that would be my recommendation to the commission, is if this is where you're headed with it, is to, um, is to require the type A buffer that has the landscaping on the street side, and the fence would have to be set back twelve feet from, from the property boundary. So what often happens in applications is the fence goes up right on the property line, and then all of a sudden you've got landscaping behind the fence, which if it's chain, chain link, maybe that's okay, but when it's opaque, you know, that is...
What the type A is?
Did, did I understand you correctly, Stephanie? When, when I understood that, that he had to be twenty-five feet off of this buffer, or twenty-five feet, this buffer has to be twenty-five feet to erect that fence? Am I mistaken?
Um, no, it's twelve feet. Sorry, yeah, I missed, yeah, twelve feet is, is...
So he could, he could erect the, the fence within the twelve feet?
Oh, oh, so you're speaking to the, the building setbacks?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, the fence can be within the building setback area. So, yeah, he can go back twelve feet, have the fence, and then landscaping on the street side.
Mr. Chairman, um, if, if he builds a fence twelve feet high, let's say it's brick, concrete, stucco, um, i- i- if you and I are standing in any of these folks' yards, and that fence is twelve feet high, a, a motorhome on the other side would not be...
No, I, I understand that, but I'm, what I perceive is the developer is gonna put up a chain-link fence.
No.
No, sir, that's not allowed.
We can stipulate that.
That's not, that's not allowed.
We can stipulate what kind.
You know, so...
So according to the landscape wall definitions, according to the planning and zoning, chain link fence is not one of the allowable. This is maybe because these were done post, some of the other facilities that had chain link fence. But this one is, that is a minimum of six feet high, and it says opaque, meaning you cannot see through it, so with some sort of screening. So whether that's something of a stucco, it's a stucco cover block, brick, split fence block, rid block, pressure-treated naturally rot-resistant wood, or PVC solid, meaning that the, you can, it will not be a chain-link fence where you can see through it. So, uh, I think it's very fair to ask that it's a twelve-foot fence, you cannot see through it. With, on the, on the, I'd say, um, on, on the street side... With, on the, on the, I'd say, um, on, on the street side, have a, a hedging. If you want a longer residential too, but I just know that it's gonna, you'll have limbs falling there, it'd be hard to maintain, but if you have it along the street, it'd be aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Would that be acceptable to you folks?
The only thing I'm concerned about from up right is like, like Mr. Strick was saying, then put another twelve-foot side on the fence and put shade off.
Well, we can, we can, we can stipulate that, I believe, of what kind of fence. He says the fence is gonna...
It's not so much about the fence, and we're not trying to stop the, the build, I mean, it is, but the whole point is that we have very little to know information about the entire project. So it's not just the fence, it's the light pollution, it's the, it's the entrance, how people are gonna get in and out of there.
Well, ma'am, we've addressed every, ma'am, we've addressed every one of those.
We've addressed those.
Every single one of those.
The entrance is gonna be off of three forty-one.
Correct, and there is an existing, existing curb.
Okay, okay, okay. The public hearing is closed, folks. We appreciate your comments and everything like this. What I would suggest is that whatever action is taken by the planning commission, that you get in touch with Mr. Hightower, and you make your concerns known to him, and let him and the developer work these out, okay? So, all right. Ma'am, is your public hearing, ma'am?
Well, it's not gonna be, it's gonna stop before we get along the, along the...
The, the, the county does that, ma'am. That's what we need to do. The county does. Well, well, okay, you'll have to take that, we need development.
Yeah, that'll be, yeah. As a total, it'll still be fine by Georgia Power.
All right, folks. Yes, sir. We're, we're gonna, we're still trying to get there. If everybody would just give us a minute and let us work through this, okay? The public hearing is closed, folks, no more. I'm sorry. I know that y'all have got your concerns, and we're trying to address them, and be fair, so just bear with us. All right.
All right, Mr. Chairman, would it be inappropriate to defer this and ask that Mr. Hightower and a couple of the main, and I'm not talking about three hundred people, I'm talking about maybe three people, get together in that neighborhood and figure out what kind of fence, um, I, I, I'm okay with saying a fence would be twelve-foot high, and it'd be brick, and I know this developer very well, he'll build something excessive to what, um, you and I would even think about, okay? And, uh, that's just the way he rolls. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I, I, I need some guidance on how to proceed here.
Again, I would just ask...
Listen, if you, as you commission, as commissioners, if y'all want to defer this until the first meeting in December, and give the developer and the engineer a chance to meet with some of the residents and try to iron out some of these problems, that is your prerogative.
I, I think, I think that's the motion I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
I have a motion to defer to the first meeting in January.
December.
Second.
All those in favor of deferring this to the first meeting in January signify by raising your right hand.
Now, 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 I, I would like to say as a commissioner, to you folks that live in Ellis Point, this gentleman does a very good job at everything he does. You know the animal that you're dealing with, and I would suggest that you put a storage facility there versus anything else that could go there, 'cause there are a lot of worse things in a storage facility.
Let me tell you something, folks. Sometimes when you live in a neighborhood, you gotta be careful for what you wish for.
I guarantee you, I, I think this defer gives...
Anyway, all right, we have...
All those against.
No, I'm not, I'm not against, I'm not against, I'm for.
Oh, okay. It's unanimous to defer, it's unanimous to defer to the first meeting in January. All right, Mr. Hightower?
All right, thank you.
All right, so, uh, Mr. County Attorney, what do we do about six? Just defer it to? That's the site plan.
Yes, um, you would defer that to the January fourth meeting.
I need a motion to defer SP forty-eight seventy-one to site plan for, uh, forty-eight forty-one through Jessup Highway.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer SP four-eight seven-one until first meeting or our meeting in January.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all those in favor, shh, 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 all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Okay, we're getting close. SP forty-eight forty-one, Southern Retreat RV Park, considers a plan approval for the expansion of the Southern Retreat recreational vehicle park, including new RV spaces and amenities. All right, folks, please, we're still trying to conduct a meeting. Uh, RV spaces and amenities located at seventy-three forty-five Blythe Island Highway, parcel number zero-two dash zero-zero-four-nine-eight. Property is owned, planned development district ZM forty-three twenty-two. Chris Amos, C S E C Incorporated, Agent Mario Garcia, Southern Retreat RV Park LLC, owner and applicant.
Commissioners, this is SP forty-eight forty-one, Southern Retreat RV Park, and this is the property here off of Blythe Island Highway. Uh, this is the intersection with Highway eighty-two, Highway seventeen. Um, there is an existing entrance to the existing RV park, and then this is the expansion. Uh, you may recall earlier this year, um, the, the county did approve a planned development, um, for an RV park in this location. So they are proposing, um, RV spaces, um, and a couple cabins, as well as amenities. So they have two-hundred-and-fifty RV pads, they're showing on the plan, eight cabins, and three laundry facilities and bathhouse buildings, and then also a pool and cabana. Uh, as part of the rezone, uh, there were a lot of concerns from adjacent property owners to the property regarding buffers and, um, privacy fencing. So during the rezone process, they, um, did ensure that a fifty-foot-wide buffer would be adjacent to the residential lots in Majestic Oaks subdivision, and then also an eight-foot-tall privacy fence, um, was required along the border with Majestic Oaks. And then along Blythe Island Highway, they are showing a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer, and then there is also a buffer, um, along the adjacent property lines, um, in the, the other lots that are closer to Blythe Island Highway. Um, so this was, um, in your packet, the signed agent authorization form had not been included, so, uh, this has been, uh, was shared with the commissioners, and then just on the screen as well for the record. So this is their proposed site plan, uh, so they are using the existing access off of Blythe Island Highway, uh, and this does show the RV sites and the amenities center. So this is kind of zoomed in to show some of the buffers. Uh, the fifty-foot buffer is located along here, uh, this is adjacent to the Majestic Oaks existing lots, as well as their future phases. And then this shows the portion of the park that does touch down to Blythe Island Highway. So these properties, um, that are along Plot Drive, they do have a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer, um, along these lots as well, and then a twenty-five-foot, uh, long, um, Blythe Island Highway down there. And then, um, a citizen had brought up, um, during the, during the noticing period, um, in the approved planned development district master plan, um, I mentioned, you know, the fifty-foot buffer along Majestic Oaks. The plan had also showed a forty-foot-wide wooded area, so it wasn't specifically called out as a buffer, but it was shown as a wooded area. And so the concern was that the site plan did not show that, thus, could there be RV sites or other amenities, you know, put in that area, thus making the RV park, you know, move closer to the residential lots? Um, so I have talked to the applicant's agent about this, and, um, they're really, very willing, of course, to put this back on the plan. Their intent was not to have anything in there, but just so we're able to enforce it, and that it's very clear to everyone, um, they will add this to the plan. So I have a suggested condition, that if you are looking to approve this, that you would add that as a condition, that that wooded area is, um, put on the site plan.
So what would the total buffer be for climbing those homes?
So it'd be about ninety, so about ninety feet of buffer, but there is a drainage ditch back here that provides, um, additional buffer. So I know it's over a hundred feet between an RV space and the back of a property line.
Now, is there also a fence that runs the length of that?
That is, their, their other requirement is that they would put, and they have shown that on the plan, an eight-foot-tall privacy fence that would run the length of this property line.
Is that a side wall fence, I guess?
So, yeah, privacy would, I mean, would be an opaque fence, but, um, but they can clarify if they have plans yet for what that fence material would, would look like.
Does it wouldn't take much for somebody that wanted to get into the subdivision to climb over an eight-foot fence?
Yeah, and through the site plan process, I mean, if there, there's an interest in requiring something higher, if applicants are willing to do that, I know that was talked about in the, the rezone, but you could exceed that. So eight foot's the minimum that can go in there, but you could exceed that height.
Okay, thank you.
And these are your possible actions, and as I mentioned, um, if you are, it is your pleasure to approve it. I've indicated a suggested condition about added that, adding that forty-foot-wide wooded area back into the plan. And, uh, Chris Amos is here representing the applicant, and applicant is also here as well, and happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the staff commissioners? All right, Mr. Amos.
So once again, Chris Amos with C S E C Incorporated. I do wanna say that that forty-foot wooded area that was on the zoning site plan was inadvertently left off of the site, of the other plan. I was, it was my fault, I was making some layer changes, and I left a layer turned off. But, but the room is there, it's almost, it's, it's almost the identical size as what was shown on the zoning plan. I gave Stephanie an exhibit showing that before we got here, and I will put that back on the drawing. Um, so we also had a requirement that the, uh, the cloak, it wasn't a requirement, actually, we had a dimension on the plan showing the proximity of the nearest home to the property line at Majestic Oaks, and it was a hundred-and-eighty feet. This was a hundred-and-eighty-five feet on the zoning site plan. And that's essentially what we've got right now. That, those are only on the lots that are existing in Majestic Oaks. Once we get into Majestic Oaks Phase Three, there are no homes there, and we don't have any additional buffering, uh, for there. We do have, could you go back to the, uh, the site plan, Stephanie? That was, we didn't, we didn't know for sure whether it was still jurisdictional to the core or not. Subsequent to the site plan being approved, we got an isolated and non-jurisdictional wet, wetland termination from the core that let me straighten all those roads out, sort of going around the wetlands, they all go straight through. That also allowed us to pull the RV spaces back in the corner, further away from, uh, further away from Majestic Oaks, and we moved the, the bathhouse, um, and restroom, I mean, the bathhouse and laundry facility back towards that corner because it worked better with the geometry of the roads. We are within the number of spaces that I think I projected if we were able to get the, uh, I don't know if I projected an exact number, if we were able to get that wetland, uh, determination that we, that we did get. So I think this is a better site plan than the one we had before, um, because of those things. And we still have the same buffers and the same wooded areas that we had in the original site plan, so...
How about the fence?
The fence is gonna be, uh, my name's Mario Garcia, I'm the owner. Uh, the fence, uh, we agree in the last meeting, it's gonna be eight-foot chain link fence with a bolt wire on top, plus, we got the whole ditch, and it's probably the ditch is maybe, if I'm wrong, maybe about fourteen feet deep. I mean, it'd be pretty hard to find, pass my chain link fence, go through the ditch, and then go to somebody's house. Plus, right now, when I get the park rolling, it won't be no homeless, it won't be nobody, 'cause nobody with an RV wanna climb somebody's fence to go in somebody's house. Right now, or before it, we used to be full of homeless, that's the people that was worried about it, but they don't there anymore.
All right, commissioners, questions for the, uh, applicants? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone and state your name.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Charlie Frazier Junior. I'm the proud principal of Satilla Marsh Elementary, right off of exit twenty-nine, and, uh, I live at two-nine-zero, a long way south, and this property that you're talking about expanding, uh, backs up right to, right to my house, uh, right along the line where the septic tank is, located right next to my house, so I understand that there's gonna be some tie-in to that. I wanna present these to you, uh, you've kinda heard some of these numbers pointed out to you already. Um, one of the things when, uh, me and my wife were looking at purchasing the house and so forth, uh, we saw the RV park, uh, we have nothing against the RV park, we want an RV ourselves, uh, but one of the things that we did ask was the distance between hearing, uh, from our backyard over to the RV park. Very, very comfortable at this point. We don't hear much, we don't hear anything, uh, nor are we truly worried about someone crossing and coming over, uh, but as, as, as it gets closer, that is something that we would be worried about, uh, because it backs right up there. And again, I don't, I'm not sure totally, but if it ties into the septic tank, right now, we can tolerate the smell because there's not much of it, but I'm sure as you pump more in there, it'll be right next to us, and that'll be something that we would have to deal with on a consistent basis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Marion McGraw, and as you saw on the plan, um, this was approved back in March. The residents of Majestic Oaks were not pleased with those results, but we thought we had some, maybe some conditions that were set in place would help alleviate the negative impacts. And then when we saw this site plan, it's like, all of a sudden, the hundred-and-ninety becomes two-hundred-and-fifty plus eight cabins. That's a lot more noise, it's a lot more light pollution, it's a lot more activity, and we were just appalled that, you know, we were just getting adjusted finally to the hundred-and-ninety, okay, you know, we'll have to handle this. But then for them to ask for that many more, I, I just, I can't comprehend it. Um, the noise, regardless of the buffers, and like he said, it's not shown on this plan. How do we know if this plan's approved, and he says, "I'm gonna go draw it back in"? Okay, but that's not what he's submitted. It's not on there. That clearly said, the plan that was shown, was approved in, in March, it clearly says a hundred-and-seventy-five to a hundred-and-eighty-five feet. That doesn't look like that's the same to me on there. I, I'm just, I'm very disappointed that what was approved, from what we understood, now they're coming back and saying, "Oh, we wanna take more space, we wanna make more noise, we wanna have more activity right behind your homes." And if this is approved with that many more RV plate, RV spots, how many does he have right now? And then you add that two-hundred-and-fifty more? That's a lot of RVs, that's a lot of noise, that's a lot of light pollution, and I, we do have a number of people in Majestic Oaks that disapproved of this, would like to ask you for denial, they were not able to be here for night, tonight, for various reasons. So I just wanna speak for them, that we would respectfully ask that you deny this site plan, and at least reduce the number of RVs from, you know, sixty more. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Penny Latham, and I live on Long Way. I personally will not back up to the RV park. My objection is, this doesn't look like an RV park. There, it looks like a trailer park that also takes in RVs. There are people that have lived there in trailers for years. The number of RVs that I've noticed going in and out of this, what's there already, isn't that many. And I'm in, I'm concerned about what kind of infrastructure he's gonna have to take care of all the wastewater. You know, there are people that would just dump. They, yes, Mr. Strickland acknowledged that. And also, the, the air pollution that's gonna come from the, so close to the homes, from the RVs running all the time. I had another thought, and I forgot it, 'cause I wasn't gonna say anything. Oh, darn. Cabins, that was it. Why does he need cabins if it's an RV park? That doesn't make any sense to me. A shower I can understand, maybe a recreation pool, but cabins for an RV park? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello. The gentleman that spoke first moved in very recently, so he doesn't know about the break-ins that have happened in our neighborhood. And the gentleman who owns the RV park now tries to say that the crime is down, and despite the shooting in two thousand seventeen that happened in his RV park, that it's a family RV park now. You can go and see the reviews where it says about the drug deals that happen, or, you know, the other crime that's been there. We're just asking that we have our neighborhood back, that every single time we turn around, there's something trying to be cut up or rezoned, or it just feels like we're being beaten down every single time we turn around, guys. And we have nobody on our side, and we're fighting these people every single time we turn around. And we're just asking for a little bit of help, because an eight-foot chain link fence isn't gonna stop somebody doing a drug deal, and an eight-feet chain link fence isn't gonna stop anybody going through a ditch. This is our home. These are our children, and these are our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
Yes.
What was your name?
Leanne Carrigan.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none, this public hearing for SP forty-eight, forty-one is closed. Mr. Amos, come up to the mic. I have some questions.
Okay.
Why, why, all of a sudden, when we approved this back in whenever, did, uh, why now are we gonna increase the number of RVs in there to two hundred and fifty when the owner, Mr. Garcia, agreed on the original number? Now, why all the change?
The zoning didn't spec, did not stipulate the number of spaces that were in this park.
No, sir, I know. He did, he did.
So, so there was a, I don't, and I'm sorry, sir, I don't recall that there was a maximum number that were approved in the zoning. At the time that we were going through the zoning, the, the determination of whether this wetland system was jurisdictional or not jurisdictional had not been made. It had been, the work had been done. It was in the hands of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So, with the wetland in there, we had to, when you come in and turn right, you had to go all the way around the wetland up by the lake and onto one road, and then swing back down again to get to the other side. When that wetland was no longer jurisdictional, and it was mentioned specifically in the PD text about the wetland, when, when the wetland determination was made, it was not jurisdictional, that allowed me to run the roads parallel to the subdivision property line. And, and that's where all the additional units are. The additional units are on the southern end of the property where that wetland was. It's a much more efficient layout of the land, the traffic, the RV, turning radiuses, all of that works much better with that wetland gone. So, that's the reason for the additional units. It's the same thing. We thought, we thought that we were gonna get a favorable ruling from the Corps on this wetland, but we weren't certain of it. So, I couldn't turn a plan in showing that as not a wetland, 'cause I didn't know whether it was not gonna be a wetland or not. And then when the wetland went away, then we were able to realign those roads, and that resulted in more, in more RV spaces, which is what the plan was, is the beginning.
Why the cabins?
Why the cabins? Because people wanna camping too. Some people, they don't have RVs, and they wanna have experience of our camping. The cabins we're facing in the lake is the four and east side. We get a lot of people, they're asking, in every RV park, they got a cabin, every RV park, because they got people, they don't have no RVs, and they still wanna feel the sensation of having an RV, and they camping with their families. That's all it is. They come out for one night, for one weekend, for a week, and they just camping there. They will have a, they're fishing on the pond. It's like, pretty much like our hotel sentay, but you'll be in front of the lake, it'd be a cabin.
It's very nice-looking cabin. I've seen the, the renderings of what he's proposing to put in there. It's got a front porch and a back porch, one bedroom, I think.
Yes, it's a one-bedroom. It's not like I have three bedrooms or something. It's just a one-bedroom, kitchen.
It's not, it's not a house.
And it's just a little, little weekend kitchen, pretty much. Just enough that they can spend a weekend, spend a week, the most, and just enjoy the lake view and just feel like camping. For, not everybody got an RV, but every RV park, you got a cabin.
Mr. Garcia, at the last meeting, the question about the term of an RV staying in your park, that, that came up several times, and it came up tonight.
Mm-hmm.
What are, what about these cabins? Do they have the same term limit as the RV spaces do?
They just, they just daily, weekly, and that's it. I mean, they could just stay there.
I, I, I understand that they can pick, but what is your?
Weekly.
Weekly?
Yeah.
And it must turn weekly?
Yeah, it must turn weekly, yeah.
Now, the RVs that are in there, how long are they allowed to stay in there?
We got people that stay for six months, seven months, depends. We got, the Canadian peoples, they just start, they open the borders right now, and they're gonna be here for six months. And that's what they do in Florida. That's what they're doing in everywhere. They, they open the borders for six months. They come in over here for six months. They go back home.
They've written a house somewhere out in Duane County. So, how are you gonna enforce this?
We got reservations. That's what enforcement can do. We got reservations. We count on people. They come out and stay in six months. We already got somebody coming in in six months.
Those people that are in those RVs, I mean, after a certain length of time, are you gonna run them out?
Yeah, we do. We already do. Since we own the campground, we've been moving all the old campers. I mean, if you see the pictures for the old campground, how it was before, when abided on nineteen, to now, ten times better.
This is tremendous improvement.
Yeah.
Tremendous.
You can find the police station, find out how many crimes they got in there.
Yes, sir, I understand. Sir, the problem I have with this is that, and I understand you have a right to do what you want to with your property, and, you know, make money. But it seems like that we give you an inch and you press for a mile. And I just, that's a problem I have with your, with your new design and everything. It's just, I have, I won't support it. I'll tell you that right now. I think it's just wrong. I think you're just, you know, not treating people, whether your neighbors, the right way. I'm only one vote, so anyway. All right, commissioners, any other questions for the applicants?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The first gentleman that spoke said that there was septic tank issues. This is not gonna be on septic tank.
This is not gonna be on septic tank.
This is gonna be on public water and sewer.
Yep.
Okay, and the original RV park, that was Ms. Fran's RP, V park, that was Golden Island's RV park.
Yeah.
That's gonna be on water and sewer also.
Yeah.
It's gonna be on sewer, water done. We got our own water.
You're gonna do away with the septic tanks that's there now.
As soon as we get done with the park, we'll be able to hook up to it.
Yes, we're designing the sewer system so the entire front half can tie into the public sewer whenever.
One other question I have. The portion of the RV park that goes down by the railroad tracks, that does the little cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
The little L-shaped cul-de-sac deal.
Mm-hmm.
There's not gonna be an entrance and exit there.
Nope.
There's only gonna be an entrance and exit at the rest.
And the RV park, yeah. We know, we know, making nothing different than what it is right now.
So, you can control what comes in and out?
Yes, sir.
All right, the rest of the perimeter, are you gonna have fence around the rest of the perimeter?
I got a fence right now around my whole park right now, and that was a thing that I did just because I tried to keep all the homeless people out. And my fence is bigger than the, everybody's fences in the houses. I mean, they worry about my fence. I wanna put an eight-foot fence with chain link and bolt wire on top. Everybody's house around that neighborhood, they only got eight-foot fences with their wood. I mean, if they worry so much about people coming in, they can build bigger fences. I mean, I'm putting bigger fences than everybody.
Mr. Amos, you've already got it approved with joint water and sewer about the capacity?
Yes. Now, I've got a design. I've gotta finish the design and get all the EPD permitting. This has gotta go to EPD for water and sewer for approval, including looking at all the capacities of, of those existing systems, but that'll all be taken care of at the construction plans.
Okay. Your stormwater, is it gonna go in your proposed lake and then we're out to the drainage ditch?
Every, every bit of it's going. Almost every bit of it's going in the proposed lake, and then it's going into that large ditch. But we're gonna be doing stormwater management in the big lake. Yes. But if you look at the contours and the elevations, everything's just about sloping to where that lake is right now. So, we're gonna grade everything into that lake and then drain it out into the big ditch.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'm very familiar with RV parks, and, and, you know, I, I have built RV parks in Duane County for other, for clients. Mr. Earl Perry is, is one of the ones that my company did. So, I'm very familiar, and I know how expensive they are.
Yeah.
Okay. I can pretty well put a number on your RV park right now, if you do what you said and make it equivalent to Mr. Perry's. It's millions. Your fence going down Majestic Oaks, is there anything you can do there, sir, to fortify that? Make it? I don't know. These folks always have a concern about people. You're trying to change the face, the complexion of your RV park that you have now.
Yeah.
And you're not going, they don't understand, you're not gonna have the same clientele with your new RV park after you spent millions on this.
Yeah.
That you have now.
Yeah.
But to help these folks, would, would you make the commitment to do whatever's necessary? I, I mean, to make it so somebody can't climb over your fence? And I know, I, I know the ditch. I've actually rode a four-wheeler, or actually, it was a three-wheeler when I was a kid, down the ditch. You'll get killed if you ride a three-wheeler straight down. I mean, literally.
Yeah.
It's very deep.
Yeah.
And that is a deterrent, but to make these folks feel any better at all, is there anything that you could do right along the portion where these folks live to, to fortify the fence?
We, I make a meeting with them to get suggestions and see what they want. Nobody come out with idea. To me, I think a chain link fence with the bolt wire sticking in outside.
Yes, sir.
It's harder for somebody to climb inside. They made for it.
Well, well, let me say this, Mr. Garcia. If you put an eight-foot chain link fence there, and you put wire on both sides, I feel like you've done all you can do. If somebody wants to go through the fence, they just gonna take a pair of bolt cutters and cut the way in.
Yeah.
A thief is gonna get in.
Yeah.
But please at least make an attempt.
I will.
To, you know, these people have small kids. They have children that live over here. And I understand their concerns.
Oh, I understand. I understand. I'm, I'm concerned about whatever they got a concern about, the people, the homeless, the people that try to steal. We even got the police come into the property right next to us. We don't own that property. And they, all the homeless that we move out from our property, they just moved to that property now.
Yes, sir.
And I even got the police call them and try to get the owners to get those homeless out. They don't bother me.
I, I, I know what you're saying, and I sympathize with what you're saying, because we go through some of the same things.
Yeah.
And, um, so, with that being said.
Any other questions for the applicants? All right, commissioners, need a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve Site Plan Forty-eight, Forty-one as presented.
And I second.
How about the condition that the forty-foot's gotta stay in?
Well, that's gonna stay in anyway, isn't it, Ms. Leaf?
It, it is. It's on the approved master plan, but just to make it clear for everyone, we're gonna add it to the site plan, just to...
Okay, do I need to make that a condition?
That would be recommendation, just so it's very clear, I guess, on the site plan.
Um, let's make the motion to approve it with the forty-foot buffer still in that recommendation.
Okay, have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor of approving SP forty-eight, forty-one with the conditions, significant vibration, you're writing in? All those opposed? Three to three, it's tied. What happens there? Aaron?
I can make us another motion.
It's defeated? Okay.
It is.
It's not defeated, just, it doesn't pass.
Just doesn't pass, okay.
So, someone could make another ma, someone could make another motion.
Somebody what?
Could make another motion, if there's different conditions or anything like that.
I mean, if it's something that I can help to make it.
The only, the only way I would vote for it is if you went back to a hundred and ninety RVs and no cabins. If you go back to what the original plan or, or, and I understand, Mr. Amos, he's in it for the money and the business and everything else, but mitigating the, the wetlands, you know, is bull crap to me. That doesn't mean anything. So, you know, if he wants to, Mr. Garcia wants to go back to his original plan, plan of a hundred and ninety, and do away with the cabins, then I'll support it. If he doesn't, then I still won't support it. So, that's my stance.
Mr. Commis, Mr. Chairman, I get the reduction in the number of RVs. The cabins are really not making an impact on this thing. So, I, I agree with what you were saying. We did approve a site plan for a hundred and ninety back in, I think it was March. I would support that, and I, I don't even have an issue with the cabins, especially knowing that there is a weekly turnover. And I get what he's trying to do. He's trying to put as many lots in his property as he possibly can. He's trying to make a bigger financial impact.
Okay, twist the arm.
Stephanie, could I ask a question real quick before we sit fix the number of units? So, on the orig, on the zoning site plan, which was not a site plan, but on the zoning site plan, is there any way you can pull that up? I don't remember exactly how we worded the number of units on here.
We never, we never agreed to a number in the end.
Well, okay, all right.
I'm just curious, is it how we worded it, see if there's any, is there any compromise?
What we're saying is, if we approve this, if you get my vote, some of the other votes, we're gonna stipulate that you maintain a hundred and eighty-five to a hundred and ninety RVs, and that, that's all you can have. Can we do that, Mr. Monk?
Can you repeat that?
If we, if we move to approve this, then we limit the number of RV spaces, new RV spaces, to a hundred and eighty-five to a hundred and ninety?
I think you can, but I think it requires, you know, I mean, I think you're gonna have to do some reworking of the plan, but it also requires the agreement of the, of the applicant.
What, what was the original number?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to pull up.
Says RV pad shown was one ninety-two.
Well, that's what I remember.
RV pads and cabins.
So, yeah, it said six pads per acre, and then there was a, a note on, this is the master plan that was approved. The number of RV sites shown is subject to change after the wetland determination has been completed. The revised site plan will be prepared and submitted for staff and MPC review, so that it, it doesn't, it didn't specify a maximum number of units. So, that's what they've done, is proposed a new number.
We did it from the beginning, because we knew the wetlands could change, and we don't wanna waste all that land just to do what? Just to keep green? You know what I mean?
There's nothing wrong with having green space around there.
We got, we got plenty. I put the buffers, and I got plenty green around the whole park.
We also got plenty of RV spaces.
So, so, Chris, the, you're saying that the number of RV spaces changed when you got your determination on the wetlands?
That is correct.
Okay, so you were allowed to put RV spaces where you didn't think you were going to be able to?
We thought we were gonna be able to, but I- We thought we were going to be able to, but I didn't have anything back in writing from the Corps yet. So, it was originally flagged as a wetland back when it was owned by Bo Powell, when Majestic Oaks was first being done. We'd already gotten the wetland consultant out to the site to look at it. It was his opinion that that wetland was no longer jurisdictional under the rules that currently existed. But the Corps had been given this application. And so, we had to wait, and I've got the jurisdictional determination letter. We had to wait on the Corps to act on his jurisdictional determination request, which we got back in after the zoning meeting and before we submitted the site plan. So, um, so we anticipated, which is why I put that note in there, we anticipated that we probably would end up with more than one ninety-two. But since I didn't know exactly what the Corps was going to say, I couldn't show everyone that was all I could, that was all that was fit.
Mr. Garcia, could you live with two hundred RV spaces?
Well, I can live with a number, it's just, we're just trying to make it profitable.
You could live with a hundred, a hundred and ninety-two RV spaces is a lot, sir. It is a lot.
What about a hundred and ninety RV spaces and ten cabins? That would be a couple more cabins.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if we're going to compromise, listen, you, this thing is on the verge of getting turned down. And I, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to put it out here. I, I want you to, 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 to get it.
I mean, if we can get the cabins and we can get a, a two-hundred even number, that'll be...
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, right now, right now, that way you guys, that way you guys know. On the original area that we got in the RV park, we got a hundred and sixty lots and it's only seventeen acres. This is thirty-two acres and I got two-hundred and fifty. I mean, I got a lot more room, the space, and the other one was approved for real tight. I'm making a real opening. And that's what I'm, I'm feeling like I'm wasting a lot more because right now, I'm wasting a hundred and eighty feet for buffer for everybody. Everybody that's sitting right here in the meeting, they give you fifteen, twenty feet buffer. I'm giving a hundred and some feet. I'm trying to do more than beyond for everybody.
Yes, sir, but you got to be part of this community.
Oh, I'm part of that.
You got to be part of this community and you got to get along with your neighbors.
Oh, I'm trying.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, you got to give a little sometimes. So, if you go with two hundred, if you'll agree to two hundred and eight cabins, then we can, maybe we can move forward with this. Are you agreeable with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP...
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Let's see, all right.
Excuse me a minute. Did we do this on purpose to leave you the last thing on the agenda?
I may have questioned you.
I mean, that's a new, that's a heck of a way to break a new guy in.
I saw you walk, I saw you walk in, Pete, and I thought to myself, "Man, he's going to have a long nush."
I can ask for the house, the date and that.
All right, sir, sorry.
All right, so, right here is the site, proposed eight-thousand square foot office space and commercial laundry and storage along Martin Palmer backing up to Somersby Point. Background, the applicant is requesting site plan approval for a new office space, storage, laundry facility at four-eighty Palmer. The current property owner is, has a hospitality business and has a desire to improve the quality of bedding and fabric used at their sites by creating another business to service his current hospitality business. Right here is the site plan. It does show a type A buffer, but we're speaking with the owner and the applicant. They do intend to leave quite a bit of wooded area backing up to that and I'll let Peter go into that. Here's the full site plan. Current elevations. And the possible actions, approve the site plan as presented, approve with conditions, defer and also deny, and staff recommends approval of SP forty-eight, sixty-eight.
Commissioners, any questions for the big guy? All right, so the applicant come forward.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Pete Shonauer with Tidewater Engineering, representing the, the owner who is here with us. Chris did a good presentation of what we're, what we're trying to accomplish there. You know, we're not using a lot of the site right now, in the future we may. And then, of course, we'll come back with another site plan application if that were the case. And then the buffer, the type A buffer, twenty-foot type A buffer along the residential properties. I think that's something we might, might want to go out with staff and see what we can utilize if existing, instead of just saying, "Let's clear cut and then replant." There might be some, some good natural buffer there that we can incorporate in that.
Good idea.
So, other than that, if you have any questions, I'll try to give you an answer.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, sir, this is a public hearing for site plan. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come forward. Hearing done, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing done, seeing none. Commissioners?
I offer a motion to approve application SP forty-eight, sixty-eight as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify the raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Anything else for us, announcements or anything?
Mr. Dawson.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good way. All right, folks.
Hey, 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 hold on just a minute.
Dawson has left, so we need to make a note that he's, he's not in. He did leave, or he stepped out?
Yeah, he's out.
He left, he had to go on.
He had to, he had to go.
Oh, okay.
All right, so everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you next year.